Welcome to Washington City Council Special Meeting. Today's January 3, 2022. I'm Mayor Chris Staley and would like to welcome Council members Brett Henderson and Kim Casperson. We look forward to serving with both of you. We've already had our invocation and pledge of allegiance. So at this time, I'll call for a motion to approve the agenda.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda as outlined for the January 3, 2022 special meeting.
We have a motion by Councilmember Coats. I'll call for a second.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Casperson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number two is announcements. We will be talking about our meeting schedule and a few things in an agenda item coming up. One thing that is coming up right away is on January 13th is the What's Up Down South Economic Summit. So we've, as a council, we're playing on attending. We've also invited staff and planning commissioners, some staff and planning commissioners to attend that with us. That's January 13. I believe it starts at 8:00 AM. It's at the Dixie Center. Also just like to express our appreciation for some of the events that we've had in our community recently. We had a great turnout, a great event with our Christmas in Dixie. So we want to just express our gratitude to the Power Department and the Parks Department and all the city employees who worked so hard to make that a success. Another recent event that we held was the wreaths across America. We did that about a week or so before Christmas. And it was done by one of our residents and in conjunction with our police department. And it was a very, very special opportunity wherein every grave was identified of a veteran and a Christmas wreath was placed on that. So we appreciate those community members and that involvement. Are there any other announcements that I didn't mention already? Seeing none, we'll move on to item three, which Declaration of Abstentions and Conflicts. Are there any to be noted? Seeing none, we'll move on to item four, which is Annual Council Business. Item 4A is to approve the 2022 annual meeting schedule. And that has been provided in your packets. Are there any questions or thoughts about that?
Yeah, Mayor, I have a couple of questions. Have we just highlighted these ones in red? Just talking about just the holiday schedule?
Oh, yeah. So the holiday schedule is going to be the next one. And the reason that those are highlighted in red is because those are holidays that we have not traditionally recognized for the city. So that'll be on that next item.
You're just talking about our standard meeting schedule then?
Yeah. So the schedule would be to move our workshop sessions to the first and third Wednesdays from 4:00 to 5:30. And our regular council meetings to the second and fourth Wednesdays from 4:00 to 5:30 or until we're done.
So my only concern is on, and I think we've discussed this before, was the public hearings on the regular meeting. I think it's important to keep those that they cannot start until at least 5:00. That way, the public has a chance to get here. That's my big concern with that one.
Right.
So I'd like to hear any discussion from the council if they have any concerns. I just think we need to have a hard, cannot hear a public comment until at least 5:00 for that reason, to give public a chance to get.
So I appreciate that, Councilman, and I'm happy to open that up for some conversation with the council. I can tell you that I have, since our conversation, I have spoken with our recorder and we have taken that recommendation and we intend to follow that practice. What we feel like where we have the technology available to run our meetings on Zoom and to take public comment electronically, that also opens up avenues for them. But we also appreciate your recommendation of not starting our hard public comment until 5:00 PM on our regular meetings. So we're happy to accommodate that and the recorder's office is already making that as a matter of practice.
Yeah, just so other council members know, we might have a stop just because all we have left is public hearings left on our agenda. And so we'll have to stop and wait till 5:00 and then begin again at that time. And we can change our agendas to make that to the, if we have a lot of stuff before that isn't required public hearing, those can go before and move down if that makes sense. And with that, that makes sense to me.
Great. And I appreciate those comments, Councilmember. We'll also look to, with that change, we will start planning commission at 6:00 PM. But one of the benefits in talking with staff is that by trying to, by starting at an earlier time and trying to run those meetings maybe a little more efficiently, that allows our staff to be doing a lot of their work during the workday and allows them to be home on the evening. So we're going to try it out. I think it's going to be a good record, a good routine for us. I also like the fact that we'll have more consistent opportunities to interact with one another as a council and to interact with staff on most Wednesdays. So I'm excited for this change and we'll give it a try. With that, I'll call for a motion to approve the 2022 annual meeting schedule as outlined in your packets.
Mayor, I can make that motion, make a motion that we approve the 2022 annual meeting schedule as outlined, noting the one exception that has been discussed.
The motion from Councilman Ivy.
So that you're talking about the public meeting, Councilman Ivy. Okay.
I'll second that motion, Mayor.
Second by Councilmember Henderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4B is to approve the 2022 annual holiday schedule. And as was noted, we are adding a federal holiday of Juneteenth and also Christmas Eve as another holiday to be recognized at City Hall. I'll call for a motion on that if there's no discussion.
Mayor, could I make a comment before the vote, please?
Absolutely.
You know, I was here on Christmas Eve this year and it looked to me like that that was inspired because I felt very strongly that our employees and those folks need to be with their families that day. And so I very much support this addition.
Any other thoughts, comment on that? Great. I'll call for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the 2022 annual holiday schedule.
Did we already approve this one? And we'll call for a second on that?
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Coats, second by Councilmember Henderson. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Item 4C is consideration to set a meeting to fill the midterm council member vacancy. I think there was a moment between Councilmember Henderson and Councilmember Casperson getting sworn in and prior to mine that we had five council members. But once I was sworn in, we ended up with a vacancy there. So we'd like to hold that meeting on Tuesday, January 18th at 4:00 PM here in the City Council, City Council Chambers.
So Mayor, it looks as if the deadline is January 17th to have all the applications.
Yeah, so.
Give us very much time to review any applications.
Thank you, Councilmember. So what we'll do is the notice, I believe, has been posted because it officially opened when I was sworn in. And the state statute requires that to be open for two weeks. And so in conversation with the, with the city recorder, as soon as those applications come in, they'll be dropped into your packet. So you'll have, everyone will have those in real time and together. I'll look for a motion to, to set the meeting for the midterm council member vacancy.
Mayor, I'll motion to approve the meeting for the midterm council member vacancy for Tuesday, January 18th at 4:00 PM.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Casperson. All in favor?
Do we have some discussion first? My question is, is that the plan is to appoint at that time or is that the plan to just discuss the applicants?
So that would be, that would be the meeting too, where we would have the applicants come forward and present to the council. And so I anticipate that that would be the meeting when the vote would be taken. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. And then item 4E is consideration to approve the appointment of the 2022 mayor pro tem. And I would like to bring forward the name of Councilman Kurt Ivy to serve as mayor pro tem as he is the most tenured council member on this council. If there's no discussion on that, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Councilman Ivy as the mayor pro tem.
I have a motion made by Councilman Coats. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Casperson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Did I miss council member assignments?
Yes.
Yep.
Apologize about that. I'm a rookie and I'm getting used to glasses too. So we, let's go back to item 4D, which is consideration to approve council member assignments. Those have been listed and provided in your packets and each of you, I believe, has gotten a letter. Are there any questions or thoughts about those before we move forward?
Mayor, I haven't received a letter yet. Can I look at those?
Oh, yes. It's in your book, actually.
I just got that 10 minutes ago.
You know, Councilman, if you don't mind, I'll be happy to read those. So we'll go kind of, we'll go in alphabetical order with council members. So for Councilmember Casperson, her assignments are Washington City Celebrations and Events. One that has been near and dear to my heart, which I am happy to have her serve, but sad to lose it, is the Washington City Active Transportation Committee. Maybe you'll let me come once in a while just for old times' sake.
Yes.
It's a great group. Appreciate Ben Ray and all he does with that. We've also assigned you the Washington Area Chamber of Commerce. I see our Washington Area Chamber President here, Ed Tracy. And then another one that I think you'll really appreciate is one that we just recently started making an intentional effort to revive. And that's the Washington City Historic Preservation Commission. All right. Councilmember Coats, I would ask you to continue to serve in your capacity as a Washington County Solid Waste Board Member and also with your new assignment as Executive Committee. I would ask you to serve on the Washington County Flood Control Authority, the Washington City Investment and Audit Committee, and also for you to be the liaison with the Washington City Power Board. I know the mayor has handled that in the past, but I had a conversation with Councilman Coats and he's willing to work with you and your group there, Rick. So if you'll have him.
Not if I have to work with Rick. It's not the short straw. So, but no, I'm honored to be on, continue on the boards I'm on. I've really enjoyed them and to add the additional power board and work with Rick and Jeremy moving forward. So.
Recording in progress.
Okay, Councilman Henderson. And again, each of these assignments, given a lot of thought and consideration on how each of you might best serve the community and the residents. And so I'm hopeful that you'll appreciate these and embrace them. Councilmember Henderson is the Washington City Planning Commission Liaison and working generally with Drew Ellerman and Community Development. I'd like to give you the assignment to serve on the Washington City Employee Board of Appeals, the Southwest Mosquito Abatement and Control District, and the Washington City Shade Tree Committee. Does that sound good to you? Great. And Councilmember Ivy, we've, we're starting a new committee, which is the Washington City Public Safety Committee. And that will be, I believe that committee will meet about quarterly. It will be with our police chief and fire chief. And you'll be able to have discussion and understanding of their needs and their concerns and their efforts as part of the Washington City Public Safety Committee. Would like you to continue to serve as you do so well on the Washington City Legislative Policy Committee and your special assignment on the Land Use Task Force. I almost gave this one to somebody else, but I know you love it and I see these representatives in the back here. But Washington City Arts Council is something you'll be able to work with Deb Bice and Melanie Olson there. The Dixie MPO asks you to continue to serve on the Mobility Committee there and to be the alternate to the Executive Council. Ask you to continue to serve as the representative from Washington City on the St. George Area Chamber of Commerce. And would like you to continue to serve on the Hillside, to be a liaison to the Hillside Review Board. The new council member will give, ask them to serve with the Washington City Youth Council, with the Community Education Channel, who was here earlier, the Washington County Flood Control Authority, and Washington City Investment and Audit Committee. I'd like to serve as mayor on the Washington City Hiring Committee and liaison support to the administration, Washington City Economic Development, the Washington County Housing Action Coalition, the HAC, and then the CLT Subcommittee, the Washington County Water Conservancy District and the RWSA AAC Subcommittee, and the Dixie MPO Executive Council. And then just as a matter of record, any changes or additional assignments I would bring back forward to this, to this body, to this council for approval. Is there any questions or discussion before calling for a motion?
I'd like just to make a comment, Mayor. You know, it's an honor to serve in these different areas that you've assigned. And I know for one that I will do all I can to serve well, represent the city well. But I also want to extend invitation to the, to the council members that if there's ever anything that, that I am on that you would like to participate in, please reach out. I know we've discussed about going to the legislature during Legislative Policy Committee. There's great meetings there with that, the Land Use Task Force. But please feel free to reach out and I would love to take each one of you at least once or twice during the session. That's a great experience and I hope that that would be kind of the feeling among the councilors that we can all work together and try to serve the city well under that.
Thank you, Councilmember Ivy. One that did remind me that there has been some conversation with the Washington City Youth Council. They do an annual trip to the state legislature and they have lined out meetings with the governor and some of our elected officials. And so we've had some conversation with Carmen Snow, who was here to join with them on their trip. And so that's something that will likely be happening. They go up on February 5th. So if you'll mark those dates, just kind of pencil that in, that's a Sunday. They go up February 5th that night and then we'll plan on staying a day or two up there. We'll have more communication about that. But if you could kind of pencil that in on your calendars, that's forthcoming, our trip to the, our annual trip to the state legislature.
What would be the dates on that, Mayor? I know that was a Sunday. Would we?
Sunday, February 5th. So we've had conversation about staying through the 6th and possibly even the 7th to have a bit of a council retreat where we would be up there with the city manager. And we would, you know, express some of the priorities that we have and that we see for this council and for the city going forward. So that would be the intention right now is to, for sure, February 5th through the 6th. And if the itinerary works out to where it makes sense, we would stay through the 7th. Is there any more discussion on this item? Otherwise, I'd be happy to call for a motion.
Mayor, I motion that we approve the 2022 council member assignments as written.
Second by Coats.
I have a motion by Councilmember Henderson and a second by Councilmember Coats. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll move to item 5. And this is something that I just really want to thank our department heads and appointed executive staff for being here today. I felt like it was important for me in my new role and especially for the new council members that we have the opportunity to understand some of the key functions that happen in the city. And so I've asked that each appointed or executive level or department head staff provide an introduction to them, from them to us. And then what, the way that I'd like to see this happen is that we allow them to give their presentation. And if after that, if there are any, if you have any questions during, if you just write those down and then I can open that up for some questions or some comment if there's something that we'd like to address a little bit further as we, as we go through those. The, the order is quite intentional. You'll notice the first five, the city manager, or the first four, city manager, recorder, treasurer, and attorney are all positions that are appointed by the mayor and council. And so it was intentional that I've asked each of them to go first. Then we'll move into some of the departments that have, you know, specific functions and employees. And then we'll kind of round it back out with human resources and information systems and kind of do a little bit of business of getting us all up to speed in, in our role as a council. So with that said, I probably should have at the start of this meeting, but I'll do this now. I'd just like to, you know, recognize and excuse our city manager, Jeremy Redd. We appreciate him. We appreciate his leadership and we understand that he has, is on vacation. And so while we miss him, he has been, has taken the time beforehand to record his message to us and share it electronically. So we'll start with item 5A, which is an introduction from our city manager to the mayor and council.
Well, good afternoon, everybody, and congratulations on being sworn in and being the new 2022 mayor and city council for Washington City. Congratulations, and that's exciting. I'm excited to work with all of you. Today you get digital Jeremy or virtual Jeremy, which is better than regular Jeremy anyway. So I'm on vacation this week and just wanted to give you my presentation, but it'll have to be in this format, which, like I said, is going to be wonderful for you. It'll be a little more concise, other than you don't get to ask me questions. But I think everybody knows where to find me if they have any questions later on. So let me tell you, I'd like to speak a little bit about the roles and duties of the city manager. And most of these are going to come from the code that Washington City has. So at some point, the city decided to codify the roles and duties of the city manager, like a lot of the positions that you're going to see today from other employees. So the city manager has a specific role. A city manager is appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council, which is important to understand. I work for all of you, for the mayor and the city council. So I really have six supervisors and it's my job to make sure that I keep all of you happy and informed. And I'll try to do that as we go forward. One interesting part about the city manager, it's the only position that does have a residency requirement. So I'm required to live in Washington and reside here for the duration of the term of my employment. Based on the city code, the city manager has some specific duties. So we'll go through these. Through these, I'll try not to make it too boring for you, a little more exciting. The city manager is the administrative head of the government of the city, again, under the direction and control of the mayor and council. So I work under the direction and control of all six of the elected officials that are elected for Washington City. In addition, any other duties that you assign to me as the administrative head, I'll take care of for you. I have a law enforcement duty, which other city employees also have, like the attorney and the city police chief. But to enforce the laws and ordinances of the city that you enact, that's part of my duties. One of the main duties I have is the authority over the employees. So it's the duty of the manager to have the control, order, and give directions to all employees, including department heads. And that control or authority goes from the department heads through to their employees. So that's an important role of the city manager. And along with that role, we have the power of appointment and removal. So appointment and removal really means hiring and firing. And for all the employees, it's my duty to hire, to fire when that's necessary, to promote and demote any and all officers and employees of the city, except for three, which are by code carved out of that. And that's the city attorney, the city treasurer, and the city recorder. And those three positions, along with the city manager, are appointed directly by the mayor and city council. So those, those three positions and my position, I do not have the authority to hire or fire. But all other positions in the city, I do. And those positions, obviously, we have almost 200 full-time employees. So the hiring and the firing and the promotion, demotion of employees really go through the department heads in most cases, except for the higher level positions where I get involved directly. Other than that, same type of duties, administrative reorganization of offices. So we look at the different positions, the different departments, and reorganize as necessary to make sure that we're efficiently running the city. The mayor and city council adopt ordinances from time to time. I have the ability to bring ordinances and resolutions to you for the administration of the city that I think are necessary and important for you to look at and pass or change or ignore, as you choose to do. The city manager is required to attend all city council meetings. Part of my agreement with the city is that I will attend all the meetings unless I'm excused, which doesn't happen very often. I try to plan my schedule and my vacations around normal city council meeting times. Another duty of the city manager is to produce financial reports and to make sure that the city is financially stable. So I do this in conjunction with other department heads, like the treasurer and the finance director. But we will bring you financial information from time to time to make sure that the city is financially stable and things are running well that way. In conjunction with that, on a yearly basis, I will bring you a budget and a salary plan. So in the code, it's the duty of the city manager to prepare and submit a proposed budget and a proposed salary plan. So I will start in January, really, January, February, and we'll work with you on deciding what your goals and aspirations are for the, for the coming year. And we'll include those in the budget. I work with the department heads to look at their needs and the things that they're, they're requiring for the upcoming year. And then we include that in the budget. So you'll get a budget and a proposed salary plan from me that you can then modify and pass or, or change as you require. We have authority over expenditure control and purchasing. So you set a purchasing policy. Part of my duty is to make sure that the purchases and the things that are done as a city are done in accordance with that policy. Investigations and complaints. So I make investigations into the fair of the city, the department heads, any division of the city, take any complaints that come either from employees, the city council, residents, and look into those things. We don't have a lot. Thankfully, we have wonderful employees who do a great job. So that's that's not a part of my job that that it happens very often. It's also generally the job of the city manager to to take care of all the public buildings, make sure that they're in good repair and that things are are properly maintained. That includes parks and all public property generally. And then we, of course, have the additional duties as assigned. So anything that the mayor or city council choose to assign, or I should say mayor and city council choose to assign to the city manager, then I'll fulfill those duties. And again, most of these are done in conjunction with department heads and employees. Certainly couldn't do all of this in a city the size of Washington without without great help from them. One thing I think it's really important to to look at is the mission statement and the vision of the city. And the mission statement of the city is Washington City is dedicated to being the city of choice. We will build upon the foundation of our traditional pioneer spirit and strive to enhance the quality of life while providing the most reliable, innovative, efficient, and courteous service. And and we do have this mission statement that the mayor and city council have set for us. And I think it's a it's a really good way for us to filter the decisions that we make, to base those decisions on on what the vision is and the mission statement for the city. So we want to make sure that we provide good customer service, that we're being efficient, that we're being innovative. We don't forget sort of the roots of the city and and why we exist as a city. And typically, that's to provide services for our residents. That's our main our main goal as a city and as employees and department heads. So the mission statement helps us to remember what it is we're trying to do and make sure that the decisions we make fall in line with that mission statement. And then we have a vision for the city, and that's to be a model city, recognized as an innovative, empowering, and high-quality city. So I think you'll you'll see, starting today and moving forward, that the city does try to do that. We've we've allocated resources and time and personnel to making sure that we're a model city and that we're doing everything the best that we possibly can to serve you and serve our residents. One of the things that the city manager has traditionally done, and I think is really helpful and important for the city, is to produce the city management report. And we see on your screen the example from last year. We will be producing this report in 2021. So it'll be early in 2022 that we produce it for 2021. But it goes over some statistics and some talks about how we spend our money, where our property taxes fall, and the different statistics that we think are important to gauge how the city's doing. I think we we strive to be a data-driven city. So we want to know how we're doing, and data helps us drive our decisions. It helps us drive the necessity of additional employees or where to put our resources to try to make sure that we have things covered in an appropriate way. Well, that's that's about what I have for you today, which I think is wonderful. You don't want to hear from me all afternoon. But I think the most important thing that I can help you understand is that we have a wonderful team at Washington City. I explained, we have about just under 200 full-time employees, and we have about 250 part-time employees. One of the other department heads will give you the exact number a little bit later. But the city doesn't run, is really not run by the mayor and city council. I hate to tell you that. It's not really run by the city manager. It's not even really run by the department heads. It's run by the wonderful employees that we have who are really out there providing the services and making a difference to our residents. But it starts at the city council level. It filters to the city manager, to the department heads, and they're the ones who who make sure that everybody is is pointed the right direction, doing the right things for the city. So I'm you're going to get to meet our wonderful department heads, and they they really are the best department heads I've ever worked with. And we're very, very fortunate to have every one of them. So as you listen to them give their presentations, I think you'll see the the excitement and the passion that they have for their job and and how much that comes through in in the presentations that they give. And it comes through in the work that they provide to the city. They're they're wonderful and 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 do such a good job for our community. And you'll get to know them, each of them. I'm excited that you get to know them today. But they really do provide wonderful service to you, to me, and to our residents. So again, thanks for letting me join you virtually. I think at noon today, when I'm on a beach somewhere, I will think about you. I'll stop for a minute. I probably won't, but but just just imagine it anyway. I'm excited to get back and to start working with each of you. And some of you I've worked with for a little while, and some of you are brand new. But thank you for what you do for the city and will do for the city. And I look forward to to work with each of you. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I speak for all of us in saying that we are very fortunate to have a manager of the caliber and and capacity of Jeremy Redd. And I hope he's having fun on a beach. I think that somewhere is the Dominican Republic. And I think it'd be fun for any of us to be there right now rather than here. But this is an exciting time here as well. Let's let's continue on with our city recorder, Tara Pence.
Of my office, we have quite a broad spectrum of what we handle in the recorder's office. So first, I'll just, we're a department of two people, myself and the deputy recorder, Lexi Rush. And I know you've all met thus because you're frequent our office, and that will continue. So all right, first off, we are over the cemetery. Do you want to do it? Sorry. We actually handle the administrative end of it. So we meet with the families when they're purchasing plots. We do the work orders for internments. And our new section, we've been extremely busy, unfortunately, but we've sold 18% of our plots in our new expansion just since we've started it. So that continues to be a need for our city, but that's where everyone comes to us to purchase and sell back if they do, or we do the work orders for them. And then we also handle business licensing in our office. We did implement a new software system in 2020, which has improved our our system vastly. We actually are able to bring on new applications anytime we want to. We just started a new one a couple of weeks ago for special events. So everything is online. Our different departments that these that have to review all of our applications are all digital as well, so we can email applicants. But we have increased our business licensing over 200 in new applications just in 2021. So we roughly have about 2,300 business licenses on a continual basis every year, but 630 new ones just this year alone. So there's a couple of slides that shows you some breakdown if you guys want to review it. But you can see we're going up significantly every year, but this year was just over 200 new ones itself. So and I've included those if you want to look at them later, the breakdown. The majority of them are, well, they're broke down pretty evenly. We have a lot of home occupations, but home occupation, short-term rentals, and industrial and commercial businesses are the majority of what we have. I'm also the elections officer for Washington City, which you all know. So and every two years when we have an election, I just follow the red, the guidelines that the legislature usually changes every year. But we do all the noticing, we take the applications, we do all your financial statements, and we work directly with the county to handle the elections as well. So and everything comes back through our office for canvassing and obviously the oath of offices as well. Also, I am over risk management. So it is my job to make sure all of the city's properties and vehicles are insured. And if there's ever any accidents or claims that happen, they come through our office and we submit them to the insurance company. And if anything moves on farther legally, I work directly with our city attorney to handle those. And a big part of our job is records management. So we have been working this year to get everything digital. And our office is 100% digital now in the recorder's office, and we're working with each department to get them in the same place. I have to give a little bit of a shout out. Our, we've been working with our IT department, and we have came up with a digital records management system that even the state archives would like us to do a demo on because they think it works so great. So it's been phenomenal. Everything we we can find, literally documents from early 1900s that we were not able to find before. So hopefully, we can keep moving forward. We can get all the other departments on board. We've been working with them slowly, and hopefully, we can get everybody in the same place. But that leads on to our next one, grammar requests. So prior to having everything digitized, it was taking us roughly 10 days to fill a grammar request. We are down to half a day. We can usually get grammar requests turned around the same day because all of our records are digital now. So other than the stuff we have to go search in the basement, which hopefully those will move forward to, but it's been wonderful for us. So we do obviously handle all grammar requests in our office. So anytime someone's looking for information, they have to fill out the report, come to us. We distribute it to whatever departments if we cannot find it digitally ourselves. And then we have 10 days to respond to get those back out. And then certainly, last but not least, I work with the city council. I'll be preparing your meeting packets every week. We'll make sure you guys have those by Thursday. So if you have any questions or concerns when you're looking through them, you can let me know. We do all the postings to the city and state websites, and then I'm your direct liaison. So if anybody has questions, concerns, if you need information, Lexi or myself are here to help you. We'll, when we have trainings or any travel, we'll help you get that coordinated and set up for you. But otherwise, that's in a nutshell what we do. I'm sure you have questions, but I also, when we do our packets, if you, we do include a briefing document. So when you guys, if you guys are reading through those and you have questions, you can reach out to me or the people who type those briefing documents, and they can help you with any questions you have.
Tara, what's the deadline to have stuff in for council meeting?
Wednesday is a hard deadline. We're saying now, since we've rearranged. So deadline for city council packets is Wednesday, so I can get them to you by Thursday morning. And we'll be doing one every week unless we have a change in our schedule for workshops.
So Tara, thank you. This is great. This is, in fact, there are things that I didn't know that you do, that that you and your your office does. I appreciate that. Would you talk just a little bit more about, for the benefit of the new council members, a little bit about what to expect in the packet and kind of some of those best practices in prepping for the meeting? I can tell you that these council members who are on my left and right here have always come very prepared to those meetings. But can you talk a little bit to that and what you, how you envision the council member taking that packet and going from there?
You bet. So you'll get your packets no later than Thursday by noon. The way that we arrange those, and we'll have a little bit more of a tutorial when Steve does his. But you'll get the packet. It'll be labeled with the meeting date and time. And in there is the agenda, and every item under that agenda is labeled with the agenda item number. And so they will all include a briefing document from whichever department is submitting that information. There will be exhibits or any coordinating documentation for the items that you need to review. I found it's best, like, once we give that to you, briefly look over it to make sure you, your packet is loading properly and you have all your information. But as you're reading those, if you do have questions about the things that are in your packet, it's our council that have been here, if you reach out to the department head that is labeled on that briefing document, if you have questions before the meeting, just so we can get them addressed, sometimes there's something that needs to be changed, like we didn't notice that we can get taken care of before the meeting. So when we actually get to the meeting, they're very smooth, and you don't have a lot of concerns or discussions about those items that are in the packet. You've had all of your information addressed beforehand.
So Tara, just one thing I'm gonna ask, and hopefully, we can accomplish this. I think we can. A lot of our packets come in order with the the number of the item.
Yes.
But sometimes the actual write-ups, like at the end, or depending on the alphabetical, can we find a way that the the write-ups first, and then we have all the supporting document behind it?
Yes, you want the briefing document first, and then the?
And then everything, the plot or the map or anything behind that, just so sometimes you're like, oh, and then you gotta jump back and jump back. It just be nice if they were just briefing document.
Would it be easier if it was all one single document, or do you want to go back and forth? Like, so you don't have to have that?
I don't mind the multiple documents, mostly because you have the sometimes packets are large compared to some others. So I don't mind having, breaking it down. It just, it'd be nice to have the briefing document at the start of every single, before we get into it. And it's just, I don't know about the other council members, but I just, I start there, and then I have to scroll through the rest. So.
We'll make sure they're labeled appropriately. Sometimes the names get kind of long, but if we put briefing document at the first, we should be able to keep them in order. So we'll make sure that's like that for you.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that. Is there any other questions or comments for Tara? If not, I have a few.
Just a quick one, quick.
Councilman Ivy, go ahead.
The records that you scanned, where do we keep the the hard, the hard copies of those?
So according to the new state archives requirements, we don't. So everything that we had was historic. We sent it to state archives, and they filed it in the mountain. But from now on, the digitizing, it, that is our original copy. So even like minutes, resolutions, ordinances that I type up, once those are scanned, I get a wet signature with the seal. We scan them. That is our permanent record. There is, we don't keep the paper. So we have IT back set up for us daily, so we don't lose anything. But we, so far, it has been like, I just, I can't even tell you how much better it's been to work with the digital copies. We couldn't find anything before. So it's just been so much more efficient.
Thank you, Councilman Ivy. Any other discussion? Councilman Henderson or Councilman Castperson? Councilman, Councilman Castperson? So just a few comments. I appreciate these agendas, and I agree that the first thing to do is to look, look through that agenda. And then, as Councilman Coats was talking about, you know, you can go to each of the items on the agenda, and there's going to be the supporting documentation in your packet that comes electronically. And so I think that's the the one thing that I would recommend that each of us continue to do, and that is to preparation for the council meeting happens as soon as you get that packet. So that you have the opportunity to to read the briefing document, to read through the supporting materials, and and then if there are questions or concerns that you have as you're reading through that, you can reach out to whoever is submitting that onto the agenda to clarify. But I would say that typically, when, by the time, in most cases, but not all, but by the time an item gets to this body for approval, it should have been vetted at at the appropriate levels. A lot of what we deal with is land use, and and Drew will be speaking to that. But on those items, they're going to be vetted by by staff and then by the planning commission before they come to us. And then there'll be items that will be, have to do with finance or ordinances or whatever. But I guess my point, and I don't mean to carry on, but my point is, the the more work you can do in preparation for the meeting, the better prepared we're all, the better meeting that we're going to have collectively. And and I would also just add that if it's a land use item, drive out and see the site. It's one thing to look at it on a map. It's another thing to just, you know, get out there and and get your boots on the ground. Tara, is there anything else that you'd like to say before we wrap up your section?
Just for the, for Councilmember Ivy and Councilmember Coats, because you've seen our previous agendas, in in an effort to accommodate our new meeting schedule, I have kind of reworked how we're setting those up. So you'll notice that when we do our public hearings now, they are not separated from the ordinances and resolutions. So they look a little bit different. So if you have any questions when you get those first agendas, I've kind of got the tentative one down for the 12th. So when you get that, call me if you have any questions. It's pretty self-explanatory, but it's not broken down anymore. So it's going to flow a lot smoother when we get to the items. But they will be different. So I just wanted to let you know before you get it. Otherwise, that's it.
Wonderful. Thank you, Tara. We appreciate all that you do as our city recorder. City Treasurer, Carrie Willwright.
They're already walking out on me. Pleasure to be here today. I will be as brief as possible. As you can see from my slide up there, it's got the Washington City Treasurer and what we do, at least part of it, because I think I speak for every department head here and every supervisor here. There's a number of things that we do on a daily basis that we don't put on these types of slides and don't talk about a whole lot. But they they're part of our office and part of the city in helping things to run very smoothly. First off, I'll try and be as brief as I possibly can. But I'm going to speak about a subject that is near and dear to the heart of every council member and every mayor and every department head and employee, and that's revenue. Treasurer's office is in charge of all revenue coming into Washington City. Everything that comes through, any dollar that comes through Washington City ends up in my office at one time or another, and sometimes more than one time or another. Any cash venue that we have across the the city, their their money funnels into our office where we count it, we balance it, we reconcile it, and we do a daily financial report that we send over to the finance department as part of our checks and balances and part of the internal controls that we have for that. As I put at the bottom, in our office, we are cash and checks and credit cards and anything else that provides revenue for the city. If it comes through the city, we get it as far as the dollar goes. If it comes through the city, we get it as far as the dollar goes. In addition to that, city debt. Whenever you have revenue coming in, you probably have debt that's going to show up as well. We handle all of the bond issuances in our office. We also do the lease purchases in case we have equipment that needs to be purchased by the city and we don't wanna issue a bond in regard to it. We do the lease purchases. We take those to the bank and we basically borrow money. So, they buy the equipment, we lease it from them for a period of time and pay it off over that period of time. That's why it's called the lease purchase. We don't pay the bills in our office. We leave that to the finance department and they're good at it. We just follow up to make certain that they are paid and paid on a timely basis. If you have any questions about any of the bonds that the city owes on at this present time, I have all of the documentation in my office. You can stop by, you can check out any of the paperwork that we have in regard to why it was issued, what the terms are and so on and so forth as to when it will get paid and be paid in full. We get a number of calls from Coral Canyon for all of the people who live out there because they wanna know when theirs is going to be paid off. And it will be paid off. And we actually, a few years back, went and shortened that time and also reduced the interest that we had in regard to that to try and save them money, which they've been very grateful for. And many of them have been very appreciative as they've called and asked about that. Moving on to other things that we do. Investments. This is my favorite one. We in the city are unique in a lot of ways, but one of the ways that we are most unique is that we use an outside investor. There's a public treasurer's investment fund that is run by the state treasurer. And if you wanna put your money in there, you can, and most of the cities do because it's easy. It just automatically funnels into there and they don't have to do any management of it. And they get arousing 3%, 0.3% on their money. About 11 or 12 years ago, we decided we were going to do an outside investment policy, which we put together and started investing that money outside. And what we found was that we could, by following the rules that the money management council gave us, we could earn three to four times the amount of other municipalities by going through that outside investment. Over that period of time, as you can see up there, in the last 12 years, we've been able to receive a yield on our investments, three to four times of the amount of other municipalities and invest all of their, that invest all of their money with the Utah Public Treasurer's Investment Fund with no increase in risk. This has resulted in over $6 million in additional revenue that has come into the city. It did not have to be assessed to our citizens through any raise in taxes, in property taxes or in sales tax. It's a program that I'm very proud of and we have worked very hard at it and we stay right on top of it and do as best we possibly can with that. Now, rates at the present time are not the best around, but we still get three to four times what we were getting out of the public treasurer's investment fund. We currently have a portfolio of $80 million. So, we're proud of that. So, the city is fiscally responsible, financially sound. And I think through the investment committee that was alluded to earlier is very well managed. On the last sheet that I have there, we'll talk about banking. After everything has been counted and reconciled, the treasurer's office is also responsible for the city's banking services. We make the deposits, we do wire transfers, we handle the credit card issuances for all of you that have credit cards. We handle the replacements in case they need to be replaced and approve the release of any city money through checks, ACH or other means needed. So, we not only handle it there, we handle it on the other end in approving all of that type of information as well. One thing I would like to add on that banking aspect is, 12 years ago, when I came to work here, the city was paying approximately $40,000 a year in service charges to the bank. We no longer pay service charges. We send out an RFP immediately and we got the bank to agree to not only not charge us those service charges that we were getting, but to pay us interest on the money that we deposit in the bank because we run $60 million a year through the bank that we use. So, we're proud of that standpoint as well. Also, about 10 years ago, we set up a Washington City Foundation that is part of our banking industry. That is a charitable organization that we have separate and completely separate from the checking account that we have. And we have accepted donations in that and that's the purpose that we set it up for. And one of the major reasons that we have it set up that way is so if a donation comes in for the police department or the fire department or the community center, we can funnel that right straight to their account. So, they have that money to use instead of just putting it in the general fund where it could end up with them, but could also not end up with them. So, this way, we can make sure that those donations are headed for where they plan them to be. Finally, lastly, the utilities office. The treasurer serves as the department head and supervisor of the city's utility office. Our utility billing supervisor, Brittany McClellan, who you will hear from later, handles most of the day-to-day operations and utilities, including work schedules, time off requests and utility billing. And she does a great job with that. If you have any questions, I would be happy to try and answer any of those questions at this point in time.
You're very thorough.
Thank you.
So, we're in good shape financially.
Thank you. We're in great shape financially.
It's always good to hear.
So, I'm Brittany McClellan. I am the supervisor for the utility billing department. Our department is three ladies plus myself and Carrie is our department head. We take your payments for any department, really. If you need to pay a ticket, a court fine, register your dog, pay your utility bill, they'll come to my office. We'll take care of you. Oh, yeah, recorder's office. We work with pretty much every department in the city. If you wanna sign up for services, if you move into the city, if you move out, need to disconnect services, that'll come through my department as well. We process your monthly billing for your utility services, make sure you're being billed properly for all the services, depending on the area that you live in, if you're north of the river or south of the river. And we're also kind of the receptionist of the city as well. If someone doesn't know where to go or who to talk to, they call our office and we'll work around with getting them to the right department. Pretty much us in a nutshell.
Brittany, we really appreciate the hard work that you and those who work with you, that you do every day. Counsel, is there any questions for Brittany?
Just a quick question on the utilities this time of year. Have you seen an uptick at all in residents maybe being laid or anything like that? That, the reason I ask that is we put some funds aside as a council a couple of years ago for those that may need. Is there, there's still money available in that fund for that purpose?
There is. And my team is really good at when they find someone that is struggling, asking Carrie and myself if we can use those funds, and we have been lately. This time of year isn't too bad because it's our lower cost. Summer is when the bills get really high and that's when we help more people, just with the power costs.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, next up, we'll have Thad Seg Miller, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. First, Jeremy has asked that I inform you, Mayor Rusty Hughes on the agenda today for economic development will not be here. She's gonna miss a few days this week with a medical issue. Jeremy suggested perhaps we arrange for her to give her presentation at a future meeting.
Great, thank you.
I know she's worked hard on her presentation, would like to share it with the council. I made these slides a few weeks ago and I quite appreciated Councilman Ivy's emphasis on the oath of office today. And so, it just kinda works out. Four of your positions, the city officers are required to take the oath of office. So, the manager, recorder, treasurer and attorney also take the same oath of office that was administered today. And I tend to have a personal belief that the concept of oaths and oath keeping is important to the role that we perform for public work. And just wanted to point that out. That was my desire when I wrote this slide is that there are officers of the city that are appointed by the mayor and council that also take the oath and feel the same commitment to support, obey and defend the laws and constitutions of our city and our state and our country. Like many industries, the legal industry is also highly regulated. So, I've taken an oath with, through the state bar as I was licensed with the state of Utah to be a practicing attorney. And I've done that with the state bar of Nevada as I was licensed with the state bar of Nevada. Also, I've taken an oath for certain professional duties and commitments through the state bar. And so, we then move into, the city managers worked with the departments to have us come up with different mission statements and visions. And I thought that it would be nice for the council to see the mission statement that the city attorney's office is prepared in conjunction with management. I also think it really describes what the city attorney's office is, why it exists and what it does. The city attorney provides legal counsel to the city council, to the planning commission, to the mayor and also to the city manager and the various departments. Most of my time is probably with the various departments. You know, you saw the recorder. I have very active roles with grammar requests, with claims. Also, with, a good example, she mentioned elections. I had a very active role with candidate filings and some of that stuff. And so, most of my time's probably with the departments, but I really enjoy the time with the mayor and the manager and the city council as well. City attorney also manages the legal responsibilities and legal services for the city. So, I have a role in writing resolutions and ordinances. I have a role in managing and maintaining the cases that exist against the city and maintaining relationships with outside counsel as it relates to all of those processes. And so, I have a very active role there. And probably the last sentence is the one I want you to most be aware of, which is "We're committed to providing professional and prompt legal service and representation to meet the needs of Washington City." We wanna be present in the offices, we wanna be available to the member, the elected members of the council and mayor, but also to the department heads who I really enjoy working with on a daily basis. Let's see here, there's two more slides. We don't need to read them both, but I just wanted to point out, they're both city code as well as state law that define the parameters of what a city attorney may do. These are fairly old codes, come from a time when I think publicly the wrestle was what does city attorney do? What, where can they go and where can't they? And so, that's also something that's defined in law that we have to support, defend and obey. In my private practice, I would frequently give legal opinion to a board of a corporation, for example. And the nice part about that is I give them my stock in trade, which is my opinion as to what the law says about that issue. And then they get to do what they want with it. And the same essentially applies to a legislative body. I get to tell you my professional opinion as to what the law says. And, but it stops there. I don't have the authority of a legislator. The authority of what to do with legal opinion is solely within the elected body and you folks get to decide what to do with it. I hope as you work with me that you see that, a person, I'm a person that was born in Washington City in 1981, graduated from Washington City in 1999 and then came back as soon as I could with my family. And so, I hope you perceive my passion for the city. I hope you also reach a conclusion that I care about the law and care about giving you answers that you can then deal with as you see fit, especially in light of what's best for the citizens of the city. What questions might you have for me?
The only thing I would say is that I have great confidence in your abilities. When we've had those conversations, I leave your office knowing that I got sound advice with just a touch of compassion and I appreciate that.
I guess I'll add to that. One thing I had a note here. I do want to be opened in person in my office to meet with any of you as you see fit, but also I like to attend the meetings of the commission and the council. I like to be available for public opinion or public counsel when needed to answer legal questions within the meetings. And so, I try to be available to answer your questions with whichever time they might arise. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Thad. We're grateful to have you here. We appreciate your experience and perspective in all that you do. We'll move on now with our police chief.
Do we need a short recess?
Jason Williams.
You guys okay? Need recess?
Do we?
Yeah.
Do we need a recess?
Yeah, for the old guys up here.
All right, we'll take, we'll take five-minute break. We'll take, uh, we'll take five minute break.
Please, thank you.
I've been hearing from you now.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for having us. Let Steve run the slideshow. Here's your, uh, Washington City Police Department. This is from our last, um, awards banquet we had in May. We generally have our awards banquet during police week in May. So this is our, our department today, so. Currently we're at thirty-seven full-time staff, three part-time staff, um, nine in administration, which we will see sixteen in patrol, three detectives, three school resource officers, some clerical staff, code enforcement, animal control and victim advocate. Make up our, uh, our police department over there. In administration by myself, patrol lieutenant Corey Klotz and, uh, sergeants there with the support services lieutenant Matt Page and his, um, subordinates there. The support service sergeant Josh Venona, um, oversees animal control and code enforcement and our victim services. And then Tyson Dove there oversees our school resource officers and detectives. Our mission statement to protect and serve those who reside in or visit Washington City, provide professional and ethical law enforcement, public safety and traffic services. We're committed to engage the community and function as a team to achieve our mission through integrity, honesty and enthusiasm while encouraging innovation and productivity. This has been our mission since we opened, um, January one, two thousand and six. And currently we still strive to achieve this. Oh, this is our philosophy now, sorry. Washington City Police Department is a team-oriented organization that works together to accomplish the mission at hand. Um, with all the resources this department has to offer, there is nothing we cannot accomplish as a team with our, our various partners to provide the citizens, visitors of Washington City a safe place to live, work and visit. Washington City Police Department will do business with the community policing philosophy. Um, this has been our philosophy since we opened as well. And we want to maintain this and make sure that Washington City stays on the map as a place that people want to live, work and play and just keep that high level of, um, now I've lost my train of thought. Quality of life that we, that we enjoy, so. Calls for service, so we're now working on twenty twenty-one, um, those stats, but you'll see twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty stats. Um, over the year of twenty twenty, there were ten thousand, six hundred and sixty-one calls created by dispatch for Washington City. Um, we responded to a total of ten thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight incidents, which is an average of about twenty-eight calls per day. And then these next few slides are just going to be a lot of stats which you guys will have access to. I believe they'll be put in your, your packets, um, that you're able to review. I can go through them, but it is gonna kind of be a long, long presentation. We'll hit some of those. So the person crime analysis, these are all your people crime, hundred and seventy-two offenses. And then it's broken down. You see both of those from year to year. In twenty nineteen, there were a hundred and nineteen. Next. Financial crimes, hundred and sixty fraud and forgery cases. In twenty nineteen, there are a hundred and forty-five. Next. And then just so on and so forth. I don't know if you wanted me to go through each one of these. There's, like I said, there's probably about eight slides of this. But if you have a question on any one of these, I'm glad to help bring some clarification to that. Drug offenses, this is, um, again, a growing problem. Um, we keep seeing, uh, it pop up more and more. A lot of that is due to our, our geographic location where we, where we sit next to I-15. We get a lot of stuff trafficked and you've seen us in the media recent with a lot of seizures and that, so. Out in twenty twenty, we took two hundred and fifty-five people to jail. Um, during twenty nineteen, there were four hundred and sixty people we took to jail. Due to COVID, there, there were some restrictions on who we could and couldn't take out there. So there was a lot of sight and release in twenty twenty, so. Available resources that we have to us are dispatch center. We've got bike patrol, K-9 traffic, school resource investigations. We also have partnerships with ICAC, which is Internet Crimes Against Children. Drug task force with resources, um, with the DEA, Homeland Security, HSI, ICE and US Marshals. We participate with our county metro SWAT team and also local or in-house animal control and enforcement, so. Dispatch, go, next. This is a, a county-wide center, so all, all nine-one-one calls go to the, go to one center and then they're dispatched appropriately that way. Bike patrol, this is, uh, a fun, um, uh, assignment to have. Uh, we typically, you'll see us on our bikes during parades and special events. Um, tend, we like to get into our multi-housing developments and shopping areas as well, but they're not utilized on a full-time basis, but on as needed or special assignment, so. Drug task force, we've got one, um, detective assigned to the drug task force right now who works really hard with the other, um, metro task force, um, members in there from the county, uh, Ivans, Hurricane and APMP in St. George City, so. Next. These are our K-9s. We have officer neighbor with Atticus there and officer Tanner with Zook. Um, officer Tanner and Zook are both patrol and narcotic certified. Officer Atticus, or sorry, officer neighbor and Atticus are just narcotic. School resource officers, we have three officers, uh, assigned to the intermediate school, um, high school and middle school. And then they're each, um, also assigned in the elementary schools as well. We, we do not, um, have officers at St. George Academy or at the Montessori School, but we do obviously work with them when things are needed there, so. And that's us. Any questions?
Counsel, what questions do you have for our police chief or, or comments? Maybe a comment might be. You guys are great. Thank you.
Chief Williams is awesome. I've known him since he was a little guy. Huh, chief?
Some of that stuff is secret still. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, chief.
We appreciate you. Uh, next is our fire chief, uh, Chief Evans.
Just for the record, you're supposed to be the fire department before the police department? Yeah, they do. We like to make them feel better. So just, uh, thanks for some time. We'll share a little bit about your fire department, kind of how it's put together. Um, this is a, a very similar, uh, picture from our last banquet. You notice that there is at least one smart police officer in our city? You can see him in our picture. And, uh, as he, as he still likes to be a firefighter as well. So I'll just give you a little bit of information on the department. So of course you have a full-time chief and then we have one full-time administrative assistant, uh, Nancy works over there. Uh, me and Nancy are really the two, uh, day shift folks, uh, as far as it goes. The rest of the staff are all working on some type of a rotating shift. Now, we have eighteen full-time. Um, the, the fire service is pretty typical in twenty-four hour blocks. Um, most of the state of Utah is working the same schedule as we work, uh, which is a forty-eight ninety-six. Um, so, uh, they come in, of course, work forty-eight hours. Uh, our part-time shifts, uh, vary. They can come in and work those in a twelve or twenty-five hour shift. Uh, we use our, our part timers to augment, which we'll talk about that staffing. And we still have some volunteers, uh, some of those, uh, uh, just like, uh, Officer Nash, uh, works for another department in the city. We have a couple of people in the city, uh, that do that. And so then they volunteer in the fire department. So they put themselves through all that training, uh, so that they can come and volunteer more, uh, in the city than just work. So pretty, pretty neat stuff. A little bit, uh, as far as what's, uh, what went on in this last year. Uh, so we, uh, we're just over twenty-four hundred calls for service. You can see that, uh, how that breaks up, which is pretty standard, uh, for most of the fire departments, uh, especially in the state of Utah, most respond to fire and EMS. Um, and, uh, the bigger percentage of calls is, uh, is really medical calls, just, uh, similar to what we had here today. Uh, you can see the, uh, the, the growth rate. Uh, it's, uh, it's gone up pretty quick. Uh, for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, uh, it was, uh, it was about eleven percent. You can see in the last five years, um, pretty significant as far as, uh, what's going on, uh, with, uh, an increase. Uh, mutual aid and automatic aid, they're really two different things. Uh, mutual aid is if we call and ask for somebody to come. Automatic aid is those times where they're dispatched with us. We have an automatic aid agreement with Hurricane and, uh, we, we'll, we'll continue to try to work with St. George to, uh, to make that happen. So, uh, so we received that, uh, for seven, uh, calls last year. And then we, uh, we reciprocated that on eighteen calls where we went one direction or another, uh, not necessarily just to our neighbors. Uh, we do go up, uh, eighteen every once in a while and help. And, um, and actually we've, uh, we, we've, uh, went up. No, as far as New Harmony, uh, in this last year, actually I take that back. We sent a, uh, we sent a truck to Cedar City for a large structure fire that they had commercially in twenty-one. Uh, fire loss and saves, uh, you can kind of see that number. Uh, just to give you an idea of what you lose, we lose in fires. This, that was just in twenty, uh, twenty-one. Those are our round numbers. It's, uh, somewhat of an estimate. There's a calculation in the system. Um, so, uh, when you look at the, uh, the amount of fires that, uh, that we had last year, we like to focus more on the, uh, on the save, which is about eighteen million dollars. Uh, we, uh, we have three stations. Sixty-one is our main station, uh, staffed with two full timers and then one part timer augments that. Um, this is the station that sits on Buena Vista. We'll expect you to remember the numbers. There's going to be a test. Uh, station sixty-two, this is just down from Public Works. Uh, interestingly enough, it's at, uh, nine-one-one East and Washington Dam Road. So I'm not sure if they plan that exactly or if they changed the address. I don't know. We'd have to ask Dale. But, uh, it's staffed the same as one. And then, uh, sixty-four, uh, this is our joint station that's, uh, out in Coral Canyon. Uh, you can see a forty-six and a sixty-four. So Washington Cities are the sixties. So all of our equipment start with a six and all of Hurricane's equipment starts with a four. So and they're dispatched out, if they're dispatched to Hurricane, they just call it a four. And, uh, if it comes this way, it's called a six, no matter what the equipment is. And, uh, and we currently have, uh, two full timers from Washington and then two full timers from, from Hurricane that staff that. And then we split all the costs of that station. Um, and this will be, uh, as we talk about apparatus, this will be where the ladder truck went. Uh, so we, we, uh, we ordered and purchased a ladder truck, uh, over a year ago. We hope to see it in another four or five months. Um, and, uh, and it'll be at this station. Uh, this is, uh, just a, a general depiction. You can see the colors. This is basically, uh, we look at a national standard. It, uh, it's four minutes. Uh, this map really, uh, illustrates, uh, why y'all, uh, work so hard and we appreciate that support in working with SITLA. Uh, you can see that Sienna Hills area, uh, is, is outside of that. And then of course, everything on the south side. So we have, uh, we do have the property, uh, and we'll be working, of course, in the future as we plan that to, to put stations, as you can see here. This is how we, we come up with where to put those. Um, and, uh, and Dale is, is beyond helpful, uh, out of Mike's group, uh, in GIS to, uh, to be able to work this stuff up for us really quick. Uh, our equipment currently, uh, we know this stuff is, uh, is pretty expensive. Uh, we appreciate the, uh, the, the purchase to try to catch us up. Uh, we are definitely behind, um, but, uh, you can see what, you know, for basically what we have, um, we are, are getting to where, uh, our, our equipment is, is very reliable. Um, there wasn't, wasn't too many months ago that we had to call Mike's group to come and pick him up off of, uh, you know, an incident at least once a month or so. We left it on the side of the road or in front of someone's house, so. Um, interesting enough, the, uh, the fire department, uh, in twenty twenty-two, uh, celebrates its fiftieth anniversary. It started as a volunteer organization fifty years ago. So, um, like most, uh, it, uh, we didn't want to keep all that heritage. It, uh, it really started as a group of neighbors that came together and said, what are we going to do? And, uh, we need to have some protection. And they found a way to, to get an old fire truck and, and, uh, and started some training. And, uh, it's evolved to what it is today. And, uh, its involvement has been because of your support and we really appreciate that.
Chief, did you send any firefighters out of state to battle the fires in California or anything like that?
We did. This, uh, in twenty twenty-one, we, uh, we sent a group to Montana. Uh, it was the first time the state of Utah has, uh, has sent anybody to Montana. It was an interesting experience. Montana's, has never called, uh, before. It was at the same time that, uh, we had crews going to California, uh, and Oregon as well. And, uh, they signed our, our group into a task force, uh, that went to Montana and they spent two weeks there. They had a great experience. They got to do a, a lot of things that, uh, they don't typically, uh, get to do around here. Learned a lot and enjoyed their experience, but yeah.
Who funds us back for that, chief? Is that, that, the entity or is it the state level?
It, uh, so when they do that, uh, those, those, there's two different ways that that wildland stuff works. Uh, you can go on the board and you just go out and then the state pays for it. Uh, and so that funding comes directly through the state. Uh, those EMAC deployments, uh, that typically when we go out of state, that'll be a declaration from the, the state that's requesting. So Montana sends a request to the governor of Utah and then it works down through the, the state agencies. But ultimately, then you put together all the billing and so Montana, uh, will ultimately pay that bill back to the state of Utah. They combine everybody's stuff. Uh, the nice part about an EMAC deployment is they pay for everything. So they, uh, they pay exactly whatever we paid in wages. They pay to backfill all the positions and they still pay the city, uh, you know, an hourly rate for, for the fire truck that went to, to do that. Uh, so we, uh, we, we get fully funded, uh, as far as whatever it takes to, uh, to, to send people to assist with that. But it comes from the state of Montana or California, uh, or Oregon. And we have, uh, in the years past, been to California and Oregon.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments for Chief Evans?
Mayor, can I ask one? Just curious, curiosity. What's the useful, uh, service life of a fire truck generally?
It's a great question. We would expect about fifteen to twenty years. Some of it'll depend upon how long it runs frontline. Uh, some don't quite last that long. Some of you can get really closer to that twenty, but by twenty years, you're spending a lot of money. Uh, when we replaced that twenty seventeen, uh, that year, I, I think just in, in the twelve months before that, uh, we were about seventy thousand in, in repairs. And it was in the shop more than out.
I noticed there was one from ninety-seven, still in service?
Yeah. Well, yeah, it's, it's, of course, it's been a challenge and it wasn't that long ago that, that the city wasn't, wasn't as profitable, you know? Kerry needed to do some work, which he's done some great work. So now it's just a matter of trying to catch it up. So we tried to spread them out, which is what we've been working to do. So essentially, we'd be replacing one every four to five years to keep us in that cycle and, and help spread that out. That ladder truck, empty with no equipment on it, was, was one point two million. So they're, they're expensive and then we'll, on a truck like that, you know, we'll, we'll put easily another couple hundred thousand dollars in equipment. Thank you.
So we'll need to make plans for another fire truck when we build another fire station then?
Correct.
That's how it works? We just add one as we add?
Yeah, we would add one. And as, as we add it, in that case, it would be impact fee eligible for those because it would be in addition as opposed to, to the replacement.
Great. Thank you, Chief Evans. We appreciate you and all you and your department do. Next is Public Works, Mike Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll be very, very brief on this because I could go for hours and hours. So we will just jump right in and go to the next slide, which we'll start with streets. So the street department has ten staff members in the street department. Street department's responsible for the patching of roads, repairing curb gutter sidewalk, crack filling, striping of the roads, crosswalks, maintaining our traffic signals and street signs, and on and on. We maintain almost a hundred and ninety miles of road. Every year that increases about, oh, between eight and ten miles every year right now. We have eleven traffic signals that we maintain. We have two signals that are currently in design. Thirty-ninety South actually advertised today for bid and thirty-six-fifty South is in design. We're probably a month and a half out on advertising that project. Or actually, we have to order the equipment first and wait for that equipment, then we'll advertise. Our maintenance budget, this is just maintaining the roads. We're about a million dollars a year doing our slurry sales, anything we do for maintenance on the asphalt in the year. Our goal on maintenance is that we do a surface treatment on every road every seven years. So that just prolongs the life of the asphalt. Asphalt has basically a twenty year life cycle with no maintenance at all. With a good maintenance program, you can get up to a hundred years out of that. So that's where protecting our investment with that. Some of the projects we're working on in the street department, we've got Washington Dam Road that's currently under reconstruction. I have the thirty-six-fifty South to the Southern Parkway with an interchange. That we will be sending out proposals for the, to hire the consultant hopefully by the end of this month. The Main Street interchange is in design right now and Washington Parkway, the, the future widening on that is, working on that. That's kind of an agreement we're working on with UDOT. A lot of our road construction stuff is funded through our MPO, which is the Metropolitan Planning Organization. It's where we work as the group of cities locally. We get about two point six million dollars a year. We vote on projects, try to fund some of those projects. And that's where we get a lot of our money for our projects. We've been very good in the last five years getting some of that funding from the MPO. Water department. So water department broke up basically three departments within the water department. We have the distribution side, treatment side, and then the irrigation is, is kind of under that as well. Distribution, we have seven employees right now. We have three vacancies we're trying to fill. One meter reader, two hundred and sixty miles of main line and associated valves, air vacs, different things that go with that, two thousand one hundred and fifty-one fire hydrants. We have about thirteen hundred active water connector, thirteen thousand active water connections. We average about one leak every day. Sometimes we'll get up to three leaks. We do all the after-hours response, emergency call-outs. Those are quite often, those people, those guys are called out nights and weekends and holidays. So they, they give quite a bit to the city. We do water treatment. We have a small micro filtration plant. We'd love to take you out and show you that plant one day. It's a membrane filtration plant that produces three million gallons a day. Treatment side also oversees our wells. We currently have eight wells and that ranges from a hundred gallons a minute to a thousand gallons a minute. We have six water storage tanks, million to two point three million gallons, four booster pump facilities. Our culinary water, we will produce over two point seven billion gallons this year. Projects, right now we're completing four wells. We drilled four new wells up in the Great Line Wash area. We're working on equipping those right now. With those four wells, we hope to bring on about another six hundred gallons a minute indoor system. We're working on two high-pressure pumps to service the area that's on top of the Black Ridge, the Highland Park area to go along with their development and to be able to feed fire flows to those. Working on two additional tanks, one in the Long Valley area, one in the South Fields area. We're working on acquiring right away right now for the Long Valley area. Multiple waterline upsizes and replacements throughout the city. Washington Dam Road project is also one we're upsizing that, the waterline in that road as it's being reconstructed. Few months back, the council approved us to go to the AMI Peter Reading, which is gonna be very good for the customers. It's, it's, it's where you can actually go online and look at your water bill, compare what you were in previous years. You can look at your usage, real-time usage throughout the day. It will help us on determining water leaks, really be a great access on, asset on our water conservation side. And we are presently working on the irrigation master plan. And you'll learn, I guess, a little more about that in the work. The sewer department has four employees and one vacancy right now. We have a hundred and eighty-two miles of main line, four thousand two hundred and forty-nine manholes, five lift stations. We do the cleaning and camera inspection of our entire system. We try to do that every five years, about twenty percent a year. Some of the projects we're looking at, are working on now is the Washington Dam. With that project road, we're, we're putting in the sewer lines. We're looking at some trunk lines out in the fields, Long Valley Lift Station and Outfall Line, the Long Valley Pressure Line. And some, what we do annually is manhole rehabilitation. We actually go in and our crews will go through and rehab those manholes, basically slip line those manholes. Stormwater, Stormwater Department has five employees, consists of three thousand two hundred and ninety-nine inlets, six hundred and four outlets, hundred and four miles of pipe, various sizes, up to, we got twin fifty-four inch, I believe they are, out through the Washington Fields area. So we got some extremely large pipe out in the stormwater. The department's responsible cleaning, inspecting all of the lines. Our Clean Water Act with the, with the stormwater, the MS four and SWIP, really created a lot more work for our stormwater end in the last five years. Clean and inspected, five hundred and eighty-seven stormwater outlets in twenty-twenty-one with associated pipe and inlets and conducted three hundred and, three hundred to three hundred and fifty monthly SWIP inspections for the stormwater pollution plan. There are new development sides, so we also work with the new development, look, work very closely with Drew and his department. We have six people in that department, currently have fifty-five active projects. We pick up the projects right as they start. So the new developments and subdivisions. We do all the inspection of the subdivisions that are being built, all of the infrastructure that the city will take over in the future as a city-owned infrastructure. Attend the planning commission meetings, review the grading plans, approve, review and approve construction drawings for residential, commercial developments. Do all the warranty boards. Fleet Department, Fleet Department has three employees, fleet manager and two mechanics. We provide services for three hundred and thirty pieces of equipment, including light, medium, heavy duty construction equipment. They also do the acquisition of all the new vehicles. They spec out vehicles that we need to purchase. We're talking to the departments, order the vehicles, bring them in, outfit a lot of them for use. We also outfit our own natural gas vehicles. Currently, we have twenty-nine pickup trucks that are powered by compressed natural gas. We have one dedicated, our sewer cleaner truck is a dedicated natural gas vehicle. We have our own Fuel Island where we provide gasoline diesel. Also, also our own compressed gas filling station that's all located out at the city yard. They also maintain, maintain twelve stationary and portable generators around the city. Most of our buildings are equipped with, with standby power. And we also have three trailer mounted units in case that we have an outage that we can actually roll them out and, and actually provide water to our citizens during a prolonged outage. GIS Department, GIS is, really works hand in hand with every single department in the city. Dale is our, our GIS operator manager. He creates maps, tracks all of the sewer assets, water assets, stored water assets, irrigation. That goes hand in hand with what Public Works uses as our, our management software, is Cartograph. He also manages that. Yeah, let's go to the next one. He does a lot of the maps off our city's website. Helps fire department with their incident planning, planning zoning, power parks. He, he has assigned pretty much everything here. Yep, said all that. Questions?
Mike, you mentioned a couple of times the need for employees. Is it the problem finding the people that are qualified or finding warm bodies to apply?
Yes. We can get warm bodies right now. We probably have the warm bodies. We need to get some more qualified people. For example, the water department. We really need to find some more qualified trained employees in the department. We've had people leaving. It's been really hard to compete against the private market out there. Yeah, it's, it's just, and it's a difficult time for not my department, all the departments, even private industry. It's just a difficult time for hiring right now.
So would, would it be feasible to hire somebody and train them or you would prefer the training, but?
Well, and that's kind of what we're at. But, you know, so like in water department, it's, 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 it's a pretty technical side, especially when you start moving up the ladder in there. So we've got plenty of guys. We got grades one, two, three, four. We got plenty of guys down at that grade one and two level, which they've been here for three to five years. We need to get some of those people that have a little bit more of the experience that can be more of the leaders for the departments, so.
Do we feel like we're competitive with what we have to offer as a city?
We are. Yeah, we're relatively competitive with the cities around us. It's just that we can't compete against private industry. It's just. You know, we used to, years ago, I used to get simply sixty applicants for a job. Now we might, might get one or two. But I think it's the economy that we're in right now. It's like you say, it's, it's difficult everywhere. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments for Public Works? Mike, before you leave, would, would you just take a moment and introduce us to a couple of your key staff members here?
So Lester Dalton, he's the assistant director. We've kind of reorganized the department. Lester is the assistant public works director over water sewer. And then Andy Stevens, he's assistant director over streets and stormwater. So we, we've been growing enough and we, we're just kind of breaking up some of the responsibilities, putting a little bit more on these two guys and relieving a little bit more off of me.
Well, we, we, as a mayor and council, we appreciate you. We appreciate Lester and Andy and, and all of your employees there and all you do in Public Works. And a lot of it goes unseen and, and until there's a problem. So we appreciate you keeping everything running the right way. And we know it takes a lot of work and it's a twenty-four, seven job. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I, I'd just like to tell the story. I've, I've been with the city for twenty-four years. When I came to work here, I, I was with Santa Clara City for four and then came to Washington. At that time, Santa Clara City and Washington were almost exactly the same population. We were sixty-two hundred. And I had six employees in Public Works. So we've grown a little bit. Thank you.
Your department's grown exponentially with our population. Rick, Public Works, good to see you. Rick Hanson?
Power.
Power. Power Department. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just to a brief summary on our department, again, if you have questions, don't hesitate to call. And we're one of those departments. Hopefully, nobody notices and we, we try to stay out of the limelight and we only get noticed when there's outages. Looks like this year, the power department will be coming up on thirty-five years since the city bought it back in nineteen eighty-seven. And the load at that time was about three point seven megawatts. An example, last year, we grew about six megawatts just in growth. And we serve the area north of the Virgin River, with the exception of the Countryway area. That area was given to Dixie a few years ago. And so that's the only area north of the river that we don't serve. We have approximately ten thousand five hundred customers and our peak this last year was fifty-one point six megawatts. And our peaks typically are in July, but sometimes they'll be in August. It's just really temperature dependent. We're, we're highly sensitive to, to summer temperatures. As I mentioned, growth, you'll see that on a bunch of these slides is, is one of our major challenges. The last two years, we've grown thirteen percent in that peak load. So over twenty-five percent in two years, which is a normal utility would consider two to three percent as an, as a high growth rate. And so we're well beyond that. We maintain six substations and sixty-nine KV transmission lines as well as the twelve KV distribution system you see around town and all the green boxes in your neighborhoods. The next one is just showing that graphically. You can see back in the late nineteen hundreds and up till about two thousand and seven, you saw that growth and then the economy tank for four or five years. And then since then, it just keeps going up and you can see those last two years have really accelerated on us. We have pretty lean staff to service our system. We have thirteen employees when all the positions are filled, which as of this morning, we actually are staffed until one of our journeyman, line workers will retire next month. So we're actually looking to fill that spot as we speak as well. But we have nine journeyman, substation positions and four technical office support staff. Our, our budget's kind of interesting. Our, our budget this year was about eighteen million. Our operating budget is fourteen million. And of that fourteen million, seventy percent is the power we buy or the gas that we burn in our generators. And so that's where a lot of my focus is, is because of that heavy weight on, on those. And typically, depending on the year, we'll have between two to four million dollars of capital projects of various, either maintenance or, or new improvements going on. Are, we purchase our wholesale power from Utah Associated Municipal Power Systems. Or you hear the term UAMPS. You'll get that, you'll hear that a lot. And we have lots of acronyms. So if ever I give a presentation, don't hesitate to stop. It's kind of alphabet soup. It's kind of alphabet soup. One thing while I'm thinking about it, particularly for the, the two new council members is on January 27th at 4:00 PM, UAMPS is going to give a governing board workshop here in this room. And so we'll be hosting it for, I don't know, probably from Beaver to.
Say that date again, Rick.
Okay, it's January 27th at 4:00 PM here in our council chambers. And that just came up this last week, so I, I wanted to make sure if you're able to attend, be sure and do that. And then we'll have, UAMPS does their annual meeting in various locations and we'll invite you to those. The one this year in August will be in Logan. And so when that comes up, we'll let you know. But we buy wholesale power from lots of different sources. The current ones are listed there. I don't need to, to go through all of those. We have anything from hydro, natural gas based resources. The Vale plant's kind of interesting. It takes the waste heat off of one of the Kern River compressor stations and they take that waste heat and it's a closed system and generate, it's about a 10 megawatt plant. We have about one megawatt out of that. UAMPS also supports us with government participation, lobbying, whatever you want to call that and keeps us surprised of, of what's going on in Washington and at the state level that might affect us. The city owns and operates a six megawatt generation facility. So when you come out and see Mike's water plant, stop by and see our big yellow engines. Future resources, we have two solar projects that we're participating in. Again, these are through UAMPS that will come on in 2022. The carbon pre-power project is a nuclear project that won't be online for a few more years. Believe it or not, it's been going on for, I believe, seven or so years and we're still about eight to nine years out before we'll receive power. It just takes a long time. Another potential projects that we'll be hopefully bringing to you within the next probably two to three months that will officially participate in is the Enchant. It's an existing coal plant that is being sold and this group is going to buy the coal plant and do carbon capture. And, excuse me, Muddy Creek is another, it'll be a cousin to the Vale, the same basic technology. It'd just be a larger one located in Wyoming. And then there's some possibilities to expand our horse pute wind up in Idaho. And again, as these come through, UAMPS works with the different municipalities. Probably out of backup, UAMPS consists of about 46 members. Similar municipal utilities from California, Nevada, Utah, Idaho are, and New Mexico are members of UAMPS. So we're trying to diversify our resource. You can see we've got hydro, we've got wind, we've got solar. That's some of the pressures that'll be coming up. And I've got a slide on, well, the next one is on our, our challenges. The high, high growth rate is definitely a challenge, not so much, I'm not too worried or stressed over the local infrastructure. It's the power resources, finding those that are cost competitive and reliable. That's one of our, our big challenges. As if you pay attention to the news, they're retiring coal plants. California is retiring their last nuke plant. It's either this year or next year. So the resources available are reducing while the load is increasing in the West. And it's just basic supply and demand issues. And that tends to drive the, the wholesale power costs up. The drought's not helping. They are expecting probably curtailments on some of the dams this summer. Again, we'll have less supply and the demand isn't going to change. In fact, it'll, it'll increase. And just to give you a heads up or I guess a warning, it's looking like this summer is going to be a very expensive summer and we may, in chatting with Jeremy, we may look at possibly even using some of the rate stabilization funds to help mitigate some of that. And as we get that tuned in a little more, we'll bring it back to this body. Other challenges that are on the horizon, if you watched, have been following the Build Back Better Plan, at one point it had a clean energy component in there that would have mandated that you have to increase your non-carbon resources by at least 4% per year. In the current form, that's been pulled, but there could be forces outside, you know, in Washington that could dictate how much of a given type of resource we have and/or there's a lot of talk about potential carbon taxes on fossil based resources. And so that's where UAMPS really helps us keep an eye on what's going on there and what that potential impact is to us. Mike mentioned, you know, the employees right now were fortunate. But the area or the industry in general is, has a shortage of trained linemen. I think there was a period of time in there that wasn't a cool thing to do. And so there's a kind of a gap as the older linemen retire. There wasn't quite the same in the pipeline. And so we have had challenges and then in our area, it's kind of unique because there's seven electric utilities in our county. And sometimes we all are feeding out of the same pond, so to speak, of, of trying to find good help. And so right now we have one apprentice, kind of growing our own, if you will. And we may need to continue on, on some of those in order to get good qualified people. And then one last thing that's not on this slide that's come up and probably in the last four months, you've heard the supplying, supply chain issues. The little green box transformers that's probably by each of your houses, most of the manufacturers now are quoting one to two years delivery on those. So that could curtail growth if you can't get those equipment to supply that. So, so anyway, I just wanted to let you know some of the things that we'll be bringing before you. And we've got a, like I say, it's a small staff, but they're well trained, do a great job. Any questions?
Rick, would you share what your position is with UAMPS?
Well, I'm the board of director and last month was voted as vice chair, so.
You make it sound like it's not a big deal. That is a big deal. We're very proud of you.
Well, thanks.
Any other questions, comments for Rick with Power? I, I just have one other quick question for you. You mentioned the new projects coming on board and the carbon free project is, is looking out to 2030. Are, are any of those base load projects or they kind of peak demand type projects?
Certainly the solar is going to be there when the sun shines and that's the challenge with some of the intermittent one. The, the muddy creek, the heat recovery one, it should be, if it performs like Vale, it's probably there 85 to 90% of the time. It depends on how they run their compressors. That's the downside on those is you don't have control over your heat source basically. But that project's at the front end of the Kern River pipeline, so I would suspect it will run, you know, probably even a higher capacity factor than what it does at Vale here. And that, and that's the challenge, Mayor, is most of what's being built is intermittent and they have their place. But in order to, you can't compare a base load or a, you know, a fossil fuel plant the same as a solar plant. You just can't. There's an interesting article in the KSL I noticed today that kind of says a little different, but I'd be interested to know what their thoughts are. And so that's part of the challenges. A lot of what's being retired is a base load or, you know, you can run it when you want it. And they're being replaced by more intermittent resources. We've seen challenges in California. We've seen challenges in Texas where you toggle over to a point of having to rely on those. And then when they're not there, it creates a real issue. And unfortunately for us is our, our peak is during the summer. A lot of times when you have your heat wave, you don't have storms, you don't have wind. And so it can compound the problem there a little bit, so.
Rick, any updates on the new scale project?
Not other than it's on, on track. There's two larger utilities in Washington State that we're hoping to sign what is equivalent to our power sales contract that will hopefully come on in the next quarter. They're working out some transmission issues, basically how to get the power from the plant, which will be located outside of Idaho Falls up into Oregon. And I think once they get those transmission issues worked out, they'll sign up and that's going to want to reduce our exposure and then also give some significant momentum to the project. But the core boring, all the site prep or the site seismic work is, was completed in December. And so they're on track to meet. It's just a, a long track to get there from where we are.
Thank you, Council. Rick, as we've said to the other departments, you have our support and we appreciate all the work that you and your employees do. And we recognize that power is certainly a challenge, but we're glad that you're on our team. And we hope we can keep the lights on.
Okay, thanks.
Next up is community development, Drew Ellerman.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to do something, I'm usually accused of the guy that's long winded out of every department head in the city, so I'm going to be hopefully the shortest one today. Don't worry about that. You guys will get to know me really well. I take up a lot of your council meeting times with projects and applications that come through. So I want to be brief because you don't get to see a lot of these guys as often as you will see me quite often. My department is 13 employees and we're finally, since I started here 15 years ago, fully staffed again. Just picked up a building inspector a couple of weeks ago, started and we're, I wouldn't say fully, fully, but fully staffed. So we'd like, it'd be nice to have maybe another one, but we're, we're good with where we're at and the demand. That puts 10 people in our building department from our building. We have a chief building inspector, plans examiner, six inspectors, and then two permit techs. Our planning side is made up of myself, a city planner and a zoning tech. And we take care of all the planning and zoning issues in the town, in the city. Just to go through, and I, I left the paper on in front of you so you can follow through and keep that with you. But our building department, the main function with our building department is to process and approve building permit applications throughout the city. This department's responsible for the inspection of every new and modified building within Washington City that would require a permit. The building department also issues certificate of occupancies for all structures that have successfully completed the permit and inspection process. Just to give you a quick idea, I don't have this on your paper, but Washington City's been pretty slammed, as we all know, with new growth. Over the last four years, we've issued 2,914 new, new home permits, just new homes. That's an average of 728 a year. If you put that to a calendar, that's almost issuing a new home, two new homes every day for the last four years. That, that's a lot and a lot of the departments behind feel that, that weight. Four of the last, excuse me, three of the last four years have been record setting years for new home permits. We average every year roughly 1,200 plus inspections a year out of our department. That's with, whether it be, you know, additions to homes, new homes, things like that, 1,200 plus new, our building inspections are, are done throughout the year. Our building department does a pretty good job, even though you may hear likewise because a lot of people don't like to be told you missed this, you missed this, you missed this and get it fixed. But that's the nature of what, why they're there, to make sure that the end product, the people that end up with the home have the best home they can possibly get. Our planning and zoning department, its main functions is also to process land use applications for the property uses throughout the, the city of Washington. The processing of these applications consist of, and these again are a variety of different applications, general plan amendments, zone changes, conditional use permits, temporary use permits, development of subdivisions, which include of course a preliminary and final plats, signing of addresses, setting agendas for the planning commission meetings, sending out notices to surrounding property owners for public hearings and a series of other minor land use scenarios that our, our planning department processes throughout the year. And of course, always keep in mind that all decisions in this department are subject to the general plan and the zoning regulations in Washington City. The distinction between the two ordinances is that the general plan is a document laying out how the city wants or desires to see the growth occur or happen within the city. With the zoning regulations being more specific on the rules of what can, we don't always put what can't be done. That's just if it's not on the can list, it, that means it's not on the, it falls if, you know, just by default. So we don't list all the things you can't do because your ordinances would be probably three foot thick. So we just list all the things that are, that are permitted or permitted through conditional use permits. And of course, that's all our department processes with that for the citizens of Washington. It is good to note that the general plan is just that. Always keep in mind that it is general in its direction and has again flexibility to it. You will unfortunately have a lot in your meetings, people will come and quote you out of the general plan like it's the absolute regulation and the ordinance itself, when it's just not, it's part of that general plan. So just a helpful thing as you, you move forward and we'll have more training with you on, on zoning. And again, you'll just by experience be able to catch up on that. And I always offer every new council member, please come see me before a meeting if you have questions. It's better that we can iron those out in my office or something to help you understand things instead of trying to do that in a meeting per se. So please, you're not inconvenienced me at all. Feel free to always come, come and ask questions and, and it really will help you out a lot before every meeting. So that's my presentation. I'll answer any questions that you might have for me.
Council, questions, comments?
I'd like to make a comment. I've worked with all the municipalities in Washington County over the last, you know, nearly 30 years of building houses. And I've always been impressed by the professionalism and how courteous Washington City's building department is. So, and I just want to let you know that I've always had good experiences with building in Washington City.
I appreciate that very much and I'll pass it down to my inspectors and give them that. So, because usually we hear the other tale and, and, but I do appreciate that and they will too.
Drew, I'm going to put you on the spot just a little bit before we move on to the next presenter. Would you just at a really high level, take us through the process of a project from a general plan level down to, you know, finished product? What those steps are, what the council's role at those various steps are? I, I don't want to get into the weeds, but I think it's important for each of us to understand that process and at what points we're involved.
Appreciate that. Every, every vacant piece of land is going to have a process to it, just to start at the basic thing. So we will get inquiries from developers, people wanting to purchase property or the property owner themselves, what they can do with their property. First thing we look at is on the general plan. Whatever you want to do there, is it fitting on the general plan? If it isn't, then we move them toward a general plan amendment process. Once that's completed, then we look into the zoning. What is the zoning on the, on the property right now? We can find our maps and every property has a zoning to it. We look at if whatever that desire is fits within the zoning at that time. If so, then you move on to the next step. If not, then we look into a zone change. Now can that zone change line up with the general plan? And again, we have to go back to the general plan and change it. So you, you'll go through general plan amendments to zone changes to then put the project in. Now after that, sometimes it may be a subdivision or dividing of land and we'll hit the platting processing from that point. Then the next step would be actually getting, you know, that property used. So, you know, I like how, how Mayor Staley's seen this before and I don't know if I turned him on to the funnel thing and when he first started as a planning commissioner, which is. Mayor Staley's seen this before and I don't know if I turned him on to the, the funnel thing and when he first started as a planning commissioner, which is. You know, it's a great place to start for most people in a city. But it, it is kind of like a funnel, you start from the most general things of the general plan. And as you go through each step, it kind of funnels it down to the more specific, what comes out the bottom of that funnel. And the project itself is very specific. And in, you know, entail to that specific zoning as a permitted use or a conditional use. Then it can then run through the building permit process and get the building, the structures put for that use to take place. So that's how hopefully I hit it kind of good, you know, I didn't from ten thousand down to a foot really fast, hope you had your parachute on. But that's kind of really where it starts, is general plan all the way down. To actually having that building built and the use used on that property. And there's quite a few steps, just to also let you know. You will hear a lot of time when you're in a public hearing, people will come and say, well, we need to check this, we need to check that and we need to do this and. Please be aware that by the time something gets to a planning commission and then on to you folks. It has gone through its vetting quite, quite extensively, sometimes anywhere from two to six months. Depending on what that project is, so we, you know, we do run through and look at. We look at drainage, you know, and, and public works will see that, we look at traffic again through public, so all the departments come together. And, and we help projects get through, but we have looked at everything. By the time it gets to, at least we hope that we've hit everything by the time that it gets to a city council meeting. So it has gone through an extensive process just to even sometimes show up at a city council meeting. Just so you kind of are aware of that, if you didn't already know, it goes through quite a bit of. You know, we kind of beat them up and punch them down and bruise them up and, but get everything in its nice package the way it needs to be. So it comes here and it is best so that you can spend as least amount of time, you know, on it as possible, so.
Appreciate that, Drew, I, I'll just add to that processes and I, and I love that analogy, I've always looked at land use as, as a funnel. As a process from the general plan level to the zoning level to the plating and then, and then the finished product. But I'll say from, from approval standpoint. This is, this takes coordination amongst the staff, including community development and public works. Meeting with the, the developers bringing forward a project and. So they're vetting all of the, and the power department, they're all vetting these various aspects of does this. You know, meet the intent of the general plan, does it fit the ordinances, do we have the resources to, to make this work? And then whether it be any of these levels, the general plan level, the zoning or the plating level. Staff is going to make a recommendation to the planning commission and the planning commission is, is our. Our body, our appointed body that's a land use experts. And then that's a kind of a dual check, right, they're a second set of eyes to look, look this over and question it and a lot of the public hearings. Occur there and some only occur there. And then that next step, the planning commission. In most cases, there are a few approvals that they give on conditional use permits and things, but in most cases, they are recommending body. To us on the land use, so at each of those levels of approvals. It will go through that same process, so one project could go through. Staff, planning commission, council at the general plan level, it could go through staff, plan, commission, council on the zone and then on the plating level, so. These, these projects are. Are usually seen by us after they've been seen by staff and, and planning commission and. And I would encourage you, like I said before, on any land use items to. Take the time to go visit the project, go see it in person. And then if you do have questions from what you see there, from what you're seeing on the map, what you're seeing in the briefing document, please. Reach out to Drew, reach out to, to Mike or whoever that may be. And address those questions and, and that'll be probably the best way for us to be effective in our. In our regular council meetings when, when they're looking for an approval or, or a decision from us.
Yeah, we'll just tag on to that, that there are some, some applications, they'll end up and could be up to three to four public hearings. So, you know, the citizens will have a chance to have, have input on, on many of them at one stage or another in it. And so just always keep that in mind that it, it will go through again, it's a vetting process, even through the public hearings, there are. You know, the most you can probably have is four public hearings on the absolute worst case scenario for a developer or landowner. You know, but there's at least two to three if, you know, public hearings that are involved in that too, to give lots of input in that direction, so. Thank you, I appreciate your service and willingness to, to be here for us as well, so appreciate it.
Thank you, Drew. Next up, we have leisure services and it looks like we have Benjamin Ray, Assistant Leisure Services Director to. Present to us, welcome.
Thank you, glad to be here today, I'd like to excuse Barry, he's out traveling with family. I like how everyone's kind of given a history of the department, Barry has a unique position. Within the city, he was the first person that was ever hired in leisure services for the city of Washington, he's been with the city. For thirty one years and back then Veterans Park right here was the only park that was in the city, so. I'm gonna kind of go over each of the different areas that leisure services oversees. So first of all, we last updated our, our, our master fee schedule, I'm sorry, our. Facilities plan and impact fee back in twenty nineteen, so. You likely won't see that come along for at least two or three more years. And then I listed here all the different city events that leisure services overseas. Many of these are done internally, but about half of them are done through partnerships. With groups like the Lions Club here in our community, but that kind of gives you a good overview of what we do as far as city events. I kind of, I, I've listed on each of the different areas, the number of employees that are in each of the areas, but just as a high level. Overview, there are thirty four full-time employees in leisure services currently. And about two hundred part-time employees within the department. In the community center. Just a couple of highlights, I'm not going to go through everything on here. But you can see that we're averaging about four hundred thousand visits a year to the community center. I would anticipate that this fiscal year, we will hit five hundred thousand visits for the first time in one fiscal year, so it's pretty. Pretty busy, we have about seven thousand members currently. And we're dealing with the challenges of growth, just like every other department. You know, we had a little bit of challenges during COVID, but kind of as things began to open up into late. Twenty twenty and through twenty twenty one. Southern Utah was the place to visit and you probably have recognized that and our numbers have followed that as well. Um, one program that I'm particularly proud of, I know that we've spoken to the council about this, is we've really worked this last year. Of doing an after school program with Washington Elementary, that's been a big focus of ours to kind of work with. Under-served youth within our community. We got that off the ground this fall, we have thirty students that we currently serve within that and one of the things I'm. Most proud of with that program is starting into this spring, we've also have thirty volunteers. That are going to come and help support that program, most of them are local high school students. And so I think that's been a great effort by our department to, to engage the community within those programs. Next is our recreation division. They do youth and adult sports, they handle special event permits, so they review all of those that come through, many of the special event permits that come. Are for the parks and trails around the community, so we want to make sure that we're vetting those very well and, and that they meet. What we want to see as a, as a community for the, those type of events. Probably the biggest area that's grown in demand is field allocation, so we sit down as a. Department every year and determine tournament play and league play for private organizations and that's been. Pretty overwhelming the last couple of years, just because of the growth in demand. For services of use of, of the parks and, and the fields in particular, I think Sullivan Soccer Park and, and the baseball fields. Are really full all of the time, you know, in, in, in being used. The golf course this year. Couple of projects that were done was to in, to increase the size of the driving range to accommodate more people that are coming to utilize the golf course. The golf course had a record revenue going into. This last fiscal year, twenty twenty one, and they're exceeding that this year as well. The community center, again, on the same page, record revenue in, in fiscal year twenty twenty one and gonna be. We would anticipate going to be very much above that this year in, in twenty twenty two. Also, there's a, a pump station up there at the golf course that's going to be replaced this year, that's much needed. Just to maintain water service for, for the courses south. On the park side of things, there are currently fifteen parks in Washington City. Over these next couple of slides, you can see some of the recent projects, Shooting Star Park. Out in the Washington Fields near Horizon Elementary. Canyon Park and Hellhole Trailhead, Oilers Park, those are all recent additions to the parks as well as some improvements to some existing parks. A water tank repair that was a little bit unexpected this year that we had to take care of to make sure again for water for those facilities. We also. Have two playgrounds that we replaced in the last two years here at Veterans Park and at Nissen Park. And acquired other properties to expand. Some of the parks, thirty six fifty South Park is one that we will be actively working on moving forward. The dog park is in need of, of expansion due to demand and the Covington Home. We acquired the land that's just behind that as well. The cemetery, we work closely with the Recorders Office on that currently. There is going to be a process of switching that over to the parks at some point so that they will oversee all of those cemetery needs. And just kind of a recap of the expansion project that was completed this year, adding fourteen hundred and forty plots to the cemetery. Trails, currently we have twenty, twenty miles of trails in the city. The Virgin River Trail System within Washington City is now complete from west all the way to east. So that's a big accomplishment that we met this last year. But we continue to try and bridge the gaps north and south. With different easements and things that we're working for, the canal project is a big one out in the Washington Fields. As well as the Mill Creek Project, which is right here in downtown, connecting some of our parks in this area. And the last department that is overseen by leisure services is maintenance and custodial. Sometimes this one might get overlooked a little bit, but they provide such a vital, a role within our community. I even added on the custodial here because I think it may, you know, it's, it was amazing to me, they clean twenty five hundred fixtures a week. And our custodial division right now has only one full-time employee and fifteen part-time employees. That goes around, does all the parks, all the city buildings. Multiple times a day in many of those instances and then on the maintenance staff, we have. We have two full-time maintenance staff that handles that for all of the city buildings. They did a lot of work during, with CARES Act funding, a lot of touchless devices in all of our restrooms, so you'll notice all of those upgrades. Sliding doors in many of the city buildings that's been made over the last year. And then kind of finally, just projects that are upcoming within the department. We're looking to build a parks and cemetery and maintenance shop up at the Parks Yard. That's essentially ready for bid at this point. Sunrise Valley out off of Country Way is already rough in and the, and the restroom facilities there, the parking is already there, so that'll. Provide a nice additional access point to the Virgin River Trail. The Canal Trail, we're working quite a bit on Dog Park. You know, we, we mentioned some of those before, Snob Cave is one that we're working currently with the BLM to put in a permanent parking. Area there, we, we expect in this next spring to be doing a lot of the environmental work on that to move that forward. We've come here before with the Elephant Arch that'll go in the Green Spring Project. And you could, and, and the Nissen Park, we're going to be doing in-house as a parks project to, to. Beautify that down along the trail and along the Mill Creek itself, so it really expands that usability, so. That's kind of what we, that's what we're doing in leisure services and I'll take any questions that you have.
Counsel, comments, questions for Ben?
Just a, a question, it's more for the council, I see a lot of concepts that are completed or potentials, there a time when we're going to get a presentation on those projects?
We could do that whenever you would like to.
Think that's something I'd like to see in the near future, it'd be nice to see just a. Quick breakdown of the concepts and get some input from the council on moving forward before we go too far down the road. If we have some things that we'd like to see, so.
Thoughts, counsel?
I think information's always good. So yes, I would, I think that'd be very important.
We can work with manager Red to. Yeah, get that on.
I think that would be great, we have a, a lot of really exciting projects coming forward with the, the Wills Park, the. Looks like the Dog Park Expansion is making progress and, and the Trails Project, so certainly. We would, sounds like the council and certainly I'm in favor of that, of having some updates on these and some, some involvement in the, in the design.
Thank you very much, Ben.
Thanks.
And I, can I also just make a point to recognize that the twenty twenty one department of the year was the maintenance and cleaning division, so we really appreciate the hard work that, that they do every day, so. Thank you, pass that along to them, that we appreciate them. Okay, next up, we're, we're going to excuse Economic Development, Rusty Hughes, let's move on to the next item, which is finance. And Mr. Brian Brown.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the finance department, we have four team members. And as I show on the screen, Pepper's a senior accountant, Leanna, an accountant and Stacy does payroll. As I started to prepare for this, I broke this down into five different topics. And the topics I decided to focus on was AP, payroll, budget, audit, and then I threw in the other to catch all. So those are the ones that we spend most of our time dealing with, so. With accounts payable, if you ever have any questions or say you have, anybody ask you questions about accounts payable. You can give them this email address, ap@washingtoncity.org. And that will go, anybody in the finance department will get that and so we can, that's the best way to contact AP to handling that. And we process in accounts payable about nine thousand invoices a year. And that was for fiscal year twenty one. And we usually cut checks two times per month, so the same week of payroll will cut checks. So what other time, we may, we do. We, we try to do everything two times a month, but there's once in a while we have to cut additional checks. So we're pretty flexible in that, along with accounts payable, we produce a monthly report and this will be shown in your. Packet and in the council meetings, so the monthly report we do is a board audit and what that includes will include the. Board audit, which includes all checks over a thousand dollars that we've cut that month. And then also any bank card transaction, every credit card transaction, we include that in that. Packet, in your packet every month and you actually approve those purchases. So you'll see that, that in every, every month and then moving on to payroll. Once again, we tried to, we wanted to isolate some of these emails so people could, we were always using the same email address, we're being consistent, so we. We created one for payroll as well, so if you ever have any payroll questions or want to get, give this out, you can use. Anything, any question for payroll, if you'll email payroll@washingtoncity.org, that's what we're, we'll use for that. And currently with payroll, we process a hundred and eighty seven full-time employee checks and two hundred and seventy eight part-time checks. We are, we are on a bi-weekly payroll. So every two weeks, we're cutting checks for payroll. Another part of payroll, we used to. Print out all these direct deposit forms, hand them out. Stuff and mail them, it took forever and a few years ago, we went to paperless pay. And so now you can get your check stub electronically, we can email it, we can text it. And you can also opt in and get your W twos, which was a great process because it saved us a lot of money and a lot of time. And we can also push out notifications to all these, because we, we've gathered that information, so if we have a, if we need to contact employee, we can also push out notifications through this. Paperless pay software. And then moving on to budget, so every year we have to produce a budget as required by the state. So the budget process usually is from January to June, we're working on the budget and so. Here is the fiscal year twenty two budget on the screen and so our original budget started at ninety seven million and with, we've made two amendments. And it's at a hundred million now. And every year, like I said, we're working on it from January to June. And it's due to the state by June thirtieth to find the, the final budget. And even though we're, we submit the final budgets, we can still make amendments, like I said, because. With budget, they said the second you've created, it's out about your, it's no longer valid, you'll probably have to make an amendment. And then moving on to audits. So once budget season wraps. So once budget season wraps up, we immediately start into audit season. So we're usually working on the audit from July to. Basically November. The auditors are usually on site in October. And so there are certain things we have to prepare for. There are certain things we need to get ready and it does take quite a bit of time and we have to accrue. We're, we're on a modified accrued approach in accounting. So there's a lot of accruals we have to do and a lot of things we have to work on. A few years ago, this, one thing you'll see come before council that is part of the audit is the yearly fraud risk assessment. And this was created by the state auditor. They wanted to go out and give. They wanted a report to give to the council. And the governing body that shows the risk of fraud in the city. So they talked about it for a few years and they implemented it two years ago. So that's one thing you'll see. We'll try and bring that to you in May or June for the fraud risk assessment. And we, we did ours last year and our, we were at a low risk level, level for fraud. And so you'll see that, like I said, in May or June. And then we also do internal audits because those are important too, because we want to make sure that. We are looking at the data in our system, make sure things make sense. So some of the internal audits we, we do are payroll. The credit card account, we do a credit card audit. Not only the credit cards checked every month, we make sure there's no missing receipts, we make sure we have proper documentation, but quarterly we do, go and do a credit card audit. And make sure. That we do a more in-depth audit of that and that's actually given back to the departments. And they sign off saying that, and we, any findings, we say, this is what we found and they sign off and review that. And then we also do Accounts Payable Audit. And so we'll go through and. There's a whole protocol for Accounts Payable I go through, we'll go through and check for certain things and benchmarks and review the Accounts Payable. So now we'll move on to the other. So with the. The Washington City, we have a, what's called, we have a software called OpenGov and anyone. Anyone can. Access this. It's on our website. And Steve's bringing it up right now. And what this is, is it's our transparency site. Any transactions we post in our county software will show up on here and you can. So you don't have to actually have our software. You can go actually, and through this transparency was, you can go see any transaction that's been posted. So this is, this is called OpenGov and you can go in here and. Change and drag and look by department, look by general. GL code or General Ledger Code. If you scroll down, Steve, it shows more detail. It shows the check. So you can see the detail down there. If you have any questions on how to use this. Contact the Finance Department, we can show you more about this, but this is a great tool. It has anything you want to see. That we've done in the system. The other site we have is we do have a finance site. That, that the city can use. So if, and what we've done is we went out and created a finance site to answer. To provide a tool so we're not always asking, answering the same questions. So like, how do you handle payment requests, travel forms? We gave a GL, General Ledger coding examples. And so this is another, if you ever have any questions about what the finance does or anything that you can drill into this, we have a question and answer. I know we have some sales tax for the different departments. We put it, we try to. Vendors we go to regularly, we put our sales tax exemption in there, just trying to make it easier for the different departments can, to access this data and use it. We do use what's called Springbrook. It's an accounting software. It's specifically geared, geared towards governmental accounting. So. And that's the software we're currently using. And a lot of times you'll hear us talk about fiscal year. So our fiscal year goes from July to June. So as you look up on there, a lot of times we'll refer, refer to it to fiscal year twenty-one slash twenty-two. I like to just go by what the ending date is and just call fiscal year twenty-two. So you'll either see it either way. And then another thing that we do, like I said. That's required by the, and, and part of the audit is we, we're required to give the council and mayor a quarterly update. So we'll, we'll go download and give you all the information from everything that's been expensed or all the revenues that have been recorded. By each quarter. And then I do a brief write-up on some of the, some of the things I see. So you'll receive that. I think the next one's in February, yeah, February and then May and August is when we'll do the following ones. And then. As far as budget amendments, we also will try to do the budget amendments. In November, February, May and August, unless something comes up, like last year we had that water tank, we went out and did a budget amendment for that. So if something comes up, we'll still do a, we can still do a separate budget amendment. So that's pretty much wraps up the Finance Department. Do you have any questions?
During your presentation, I noticed many references to, you didn't say the word, but you're talking about transparency. So that any of our citizens or anyone can, can access those records and be able to see how the city's money is being spent. Because it's actually the citizens' money.
Yeah.
And so I, I really appreciate that effort.
So if you go to our website, like, it's actually on our website. You can go to budget and then it says Washington City Finance Transparency Dashboard. And that gets you to what's called, it's, the software that runs it's OpenGov. That allows you to filter, look at all the expenses and everything. It's, it's a pretty good, nice tool.
Thank you, Brian. Any other comments, questions? Really excellent, very informative. We appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Ruth Holyoke with Human Resources.
All right. So what does HR actually do? That's what I'm going to go over a little bit today so that you guys can see some of the daily duties that we do and what we are responsible for. First and foremost, we strive to be healthy, Human Resources Department. We want to contribute to the growth in the organization. We do that through our, our people, our, our employees. So on the next slide, we'll go through some of the in-depth things that we do. Oh, you're doing one at a time? There we go. So first and foremost, we're responsible for the employee's life cycle. From start to finish, we want, we oversee everything that, that an employee does as part of their whole life cycle through their employment. Is it doing something? So we recruit new hires, we post jobs, screen applicants, conduct interviews. We hire, we onboard, we terminate, we do the annual evaluations. We're also responsible for conducting the employee trainings. So as needed, we will do ongoing trainings. Currently, we do an annual. Harassment training, which is mandatory. We've gone remote with a lot of these things. We've also gone with our Healthy Utah. We want our employees as part of that life cycle to be healthy and stay on board and come to work every day. So we have them participate with Healthy Utah. And we also have them go through Utah State Retirement Training if they have retirement questions. Those are just a few that we will do. In addition to that, we, we are overseeing the policy compliance. We are to assure that, that the policies that you guys create, that we are. Implementing those and staying in within compliance. There's also some legal mandated laws as well as internal procedures that. That we like to assure that we're following those mandates as well. We're also responsible for employee relations. It's our job to help. The department heads and each department strengthen the employee employer relationship. Through measuring their job satisfaction and their employee engagement. And we also work through their conflicts and difficulties on the job. And we also oversee. Benefits and compensation. So a little bit more in-depth. Here's some of our everyday things that where I think you ask somebody, what does HR do? And I'm going to go back to Ed. First time I met Ed, first time I met Ed, he looked at my tag and said, oh, HR, I've been there before. Occasionally we get that negativity of, oh, it's HR. So what do you do? You must fire people, you must get them into trouble, you're disciplining people. But we're really not. We're actually supporting the employee. Our job is to be there and be the, the resource for all employees. Some of our daily tasks. Are recruiting candidates. So. As we post jobs and advertise jobs, we want to make sure that we're hiring the right candidates and attracting the right. People for the positions. I know I've heard a couple of times today that we're just looking for a warm body. And a warm body will get you through, but that's not what we want. We really want the right fit for each position. And you can make that hire to that warm body. And sometimes that's not a good hire, but you make the right candidate, they get the right person in the right position and it can change the entire department. Good or bad. You make the wrong hire and it can change the entire atmosphere of a department, good or bad. We also want to, we also oversee all of the employee records. And so any of the paperwork that comes through, all the new hire paperwork, all the benefit changes, all the additions to employees, family members. All those benefits go through our department. So we maintain and make sure that you have what you've selected and what you want and we maintain those records. Updating handbook policies, you guys are the policymakers. So anytime there's a policy change. We implement those changes into the handbook and we implement those as you guys make those changes to the policy. We also conduct the disciplinary actions. So a lot of times HR gets that rep too, as they just fired this one or they just fired that. HR does not fire anybody. We assist you and the departments in a termination. What we do is we recommend. By looking and reviewing all of the documents that an employee may have in their file. Do we have supportive documents? Do we have enough information that would support a termination or not? Is there a better avenue to go rather than termination with this employee? So there's a lot of factors that go into play with disciplining. It, it's the department heads and the supervisors that come to HR. To help us, help them strengthen their relationship with their employees and help find a solution. To help that employee become successful. We don't hire people to fire people. We want to hire people and help them to be successful in their, in their positions. And so. Sometimes disciplinary actions can help mold them to become what we want them to become and to be successful. And sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes there's no other actions other than to terminate at that point too. So. Lastly, we conduct the benefit analysts. So we, every year we will go out and we look at comparisons on healthcare benefits, benefit options, benefit rates. We do the same with compensation. We use third-party outsources to assist us with that. We know internally by some of our department heads have told us that. How we're leapfrogging from city to city with sharing employees. We know what they're posting. We can see their website. We know what they're posting for a job and it's like, they'll post a buck higher, they post a buck higher. It just goes back and forth and back and forth. It ultimately comes down to where do they want to work? If we create the better atmosphere, if we have the best supervisors and the best department heads. They're going to be happy. We feel like we're competitive with our compensation plan. We're competitive with our benefit plan. And, and I can tell you the reasons why someone wants to work at Hurricane. I know the reasons why they want to work at St. George City. So there's different perks that different cities and organizations will offer that attract certain people. And, and I feel like we do a very good job in, in offering the very best to our employees. So how do we offer, besides what we already talked about, how do we offer help and assistance to our employees? We provide career growth. You're on the right page. Go one more. A lot of times our employees feel stagnant in their job, you know, well, maybe they're a water operator one or a two and they want to know what can I do to move up? We've seen several employees that have been really proactive and really. Wanting to progress upward. Sometimes it's upward within their department, sometimes it's outward into other, other divisions, other departments. The cream always rises to the, at the top. And so we've always seen that those that are really. Wanting to help themselves and achieve will do our very best to help them to get where they want. They're the ones that are coming in and, and off, asking us what can they do to better themselves? What can they do? What opportunities may be coming up? Some of the other options are continuing education. We've got a few employees right now that are continuing education. Wanting to get into those upper management positions, supervisor positions. And so we know what type of work they bring to the table. We know what workers they are, but now they want to heighten their expectations by adding. Budgets or employee management to their, to their resumes. And so we like to offer that. Training and supporting our managers. So we, we also will assist with that. If they have a. A need where they need us to come in and discuss things with their department, we'll come in and we'll, we'll offer that training. New supervisors. Are usually promoted up. And so they've been rubbing elbows with the, the group and. And once they separate themselves from that. Equal and now they're superior, they find it a little awkward or uncomfortable that now I'm disciplining my employee. Everything's good when it's going good. But when it's not, now they're having to, to make those difficult, difficult decisions and it makes it hard for them to. To know, how do I, how do I reprimand? This is my friend I went to lunch with. Now how do I reprimand? So. We, we offer that recommendation and suggestions on how they can work through that transition going from an equal peer to a supervisor. And also with health and wellness, you know, a lot of times that. People's life changes. There's unexpected things that occur that you don't know are coming, or maybe there's things that do come. And they just need to know, how do I stay as an active employee and, and stay on top of my job if I take F M L A? I'm, you know, or they've got some personal issues that they're working through. And so communication is key. You know, if they come in and they communicate with, with us and we can communicate with their department heads on some. Some types of. Resources that we can offer them or special accommodations that we can offer them. A lot of times now we've got working from home as options with some of these things. And if it's not full-time, it's part-time. One day a week. And, and so we just have a lot of options that we can provide to an employee with circumstances that are outside their means. So when should you go? When should you contact Human Resources? Anytime you feel like there's harassment or discrimination going on, you should reach out to us and let us know. We see a lot of times too, that people will keep things internally and not express their feelings and emotions or will walk away from a job rather than do so. We welcome it. That's what we do. That's what we specialize in. So come to us and let us know whenever there's anything that makes you uncomfortable on the job. Come to us anytime you have benefit questions. If you've got any concerns with what's going on with your healthcare, anything that you feel that needs to be re-looked at with compensation. Anytime there's circumstances that change where we need to add dependence or. Again, make those special accommodations. Anytime that you just feel like there's an issue that you need some neutral. Feedback coming from. Third party, that's what we're for. You know, we can help you work through and resolve any kind of issues that you may have. Updated and updates. We will be, as soon as you guys walk out of your chair revising the handbook. We've got several handbook revisions that we'll be looking at. We'll be working very closely with you guys, city manager. And, and like I said, we implement. You guys create the policy. It's our job just to implement that policy. We'll be making those revisions as, as, as you guys. Instruct us to do so. There's other ones that we are aware of that we've noted that we'd like to bring to you guys to suggest as well. But we'll be working hand in hand and together to, to make those changes. For new council members, as soon as you guys are done, if you want to come over, we'll get your paperwork taken care of and get you on board too. Does anyone have any other questions?
Thank you, Ruth. I was just going to mention that the new council members probably should see you. Before I ask the, for the council to provide comments or ask questions, I just want to point something out that. You mentioned the, the ability. I just want to point something out that you mentioned the, um, the ability for employees to, um, to grow their careers within the organization. And I, and I look out and I see at least four or five here who have grown up through the organization and come into really neat leadership roles. And I really appreciate that they have the opportunity to do that. And, and I'm looking at those, I know who they are. So anyway, council questions, comments, thoughts for, for Ruth and HR?
And we really do, we have by far the very best department heads that you're going to find out there when you guys get to know them. It's just a unique group. We work well together. You know, we go to city functions, we have retreats and everyone just sits amongst each other. They don't, you know, separate off into little groups. We just all get along really well and it makes it really easy and a very comfortable job to work in a good environment we have.
Thank you for all you do, thank you for your efforts. And our last introduction will be information systems, Stephen Whitaker. And go ahead.
Switch seats real quick. I do have a fast slideshow, but if there's time, you wanted something else possibly. Our department's not very old, it's, it's about 16 and a half years old now. We came into an era when technology wasn't widely used, but it was, it was a hot topic. And I feel like my first half here, or the department's first half, was spent teaching people that technology is good and they should use it. And now I feel we're transitioning, speaking of all the great department heads, into supporting their ideas instead of having to come up with all the ideas. So it's been, it's been pretty nice. And, uh, I think department heads are really creative anymore. It's hard to keep up with all their good ideas. Some philosophy we have, we do take pride in being of, an effective department that does things a little outside the norms. And those of you who've been with us a long time know what I'm talking about, you felt it a little bit. We don't do anything that's normal. We do, we try to do what, what's best for what we're trying to do. And we do try to promote efficiency and all the other departments were kind of like the mortar of, of the city, I like to think. Where the bricks are the actual structure, but we hold it, try to hold it together for them. And we aim to take friction away from using the technology by working harder on our end to make the users more comfortable with what they're doing. Possibly I can do that with your iPads if you need it. Uh, some of our services, I feel like it should be obvious, but maybe it's not. But we, we bring the internet to the city and the wifi. The network, we have a network of, all of our major buildings are on our network. A few of them are not connected via fiber yet, but they're, they're mostly all connected through a high-speed technology, uh, which gives us the ability to support everybody equally, no matter where they work. We do the wireless and mobile communications, like in, in police cars, fire trucks, through cellular, through other means. Physical security has been put on us, that's the doors, door cards, the cameras, the video surveillance in the parks. We have a few software systems that, um, some people have been very happy with today. We support all those. Information security is the hot topic of the moment and we're, we're doing a lot in that area. It's so far so good, that's the best we can say it. We support and train everybody at all levels on, on use of technology for what they require. Some of the new stuff will be automating some processes, some new technologies coming out that'll let us automate things that used to be manual processes will help a lot. And consulting, uh, we do the website and the social media, which is a bigger job than it sounds like. The, the best thing in that area is to make it look like it's not a big job from the outside, but it always is a big job. We create our own media in-house, which is kind of unique and has worked really well. And I feel like everybody likes it. Kind of going off of that, we stream, we're streaming more now. We started streaming events with Veterans Day and, and then Christmas, a portion of the Christmas event. And I think we plan on doing a lot more events going forward. So basically we do anything technology, it doesn't have to be limited to what traditional IT covers. We'll do it, we'll do whatever we're asked. General support is techticket@washingtoncity.org. You can contact us that way and you'll get somebody, even if somebody's not, even, even if people are on vacation, you'll always get somebody at that address. We only have four full-time staff right now doing all of this. There's me, Kelly, who's not here, runs the networking side of things. David runs media and he's doing some systems administration. And then we recently were lucky to grab a new employee, Steven, with a PH. That's how you can tell us apart, who is our support and help desk. We're also, in the past, the council's had issues come before then that involve technology, whether it be through, uh, back when GIS used to be with us through address changes or other issues. Just know that we're here for you to ask questions of, for your policy decisions if you need it. And there will be some, I think the current one right now is broadband in the community. We're there to help you make whatever decisions you need to make. And also I just want to ask, we pen test everybody because everybody's involved in information security. So I just appreciated council's participation, even though I have no power to force it in the trainings and the pen testing. But we do all levels of staff and everybody and, and it's been very helpful. We've actually seen huge improvements. I think our, um, our test in the beginning showed we were 54% prone to those type of attacks and now we have around eight. So it's a, it's been very effective, a good program. Beyond that, you know me as the iPad guy, so, um, do you have any questions on the basic department?
You know, Steve, I don't know that I've ever thought of myself as a naive person. Some of the testing that you guys send out, I'll tell you, I get caught two or three times and I go, okay, I gotta rethink this. But I just wanted to comment and discuss just a little bit about, several department heads have talked about automations and how that's made us far more efficient, far more effective, cutting out on costs and overhead and, and manpower hours and all that kind of stuff. Is, going forward, if there's a way to communicate that, that you need council help with or anything to, to say, these are some cutting edge ideas that we need to implement, then I would, I would recommend you bringing those things forward and I'm sure you would anyway. But we're very supportive of that. We see the benefits just with the record storage and availability of, of some of the things mentioned today, so.
Great, thank you, yes.
Okay, any other comments for Steve?
Did you want me to continue with the rest?
Yeah, I actually would. I, I remember doing that training a few years ago and it was really helpful.
Do you want to excuse anybody?
That's actually not a bad idea. I'll just make this comment, Steve, we're not only a growing city, but we're an evolving city as well, aren't we? I think what we can do at this point is, um, I think we can adjourn and then, well, we'll need to stay here for the training, won't we? So I'll, I'll be happy to excuse anybody who does not want the iPad training.
You all do.
Except for Chief Williams.
It's not a long training, so.
I think the fire department and the police chief need to stay here, right by each other.
Drew, don't go too far, please.
All right, great.
So are we gonna adjourn mayor then?
Do you, do you want us to stay in this setting or how do you want, how do you want to do it?
This setting will be fine, I'll just switch the TVs over so I can.
Councilman Coats, do you want to stay for the training?
I was gonna ask if I can leave because I've, I've been through the training and I, I need to head.
I'd be happy to, uh, excuse Councilman.
That's why I was asking if we could adjourn and then.
I just worry if we adjourn that we're still in a quorum, so. Okay, Councilman Coats, would you make the motion that we are going to adjourn to go into iPad training?
Yes, I will make the motion that we adjourn our January 3rd, 2022 meeting and go into the iPad training.
I have a motion by Councilman Coats, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Councilmember Casperson, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, January 5th at 4:00 PM, Public Works Speeding, uh, Building Conference Room. It's at the Public Works Building Conference Room, Wednesday at 4:00. Wednesday, January 5th, yes.
I shared those calendars with these two, so we should be able to help you update that.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, at this point, I think we'll just let some of the decorum go and just feel free to interact with, with Steve on any, any questions you have. Are we going to keep recording this or are we cutting the recording at this point?
I'll do whatever I'm asked to do.
I don't think we need to record this section.